Okay, ready? Call order the Garrison Board of Education regular meeting April 23, 2019. And as our traditional, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on your agenda is a literacy update and presentation by Superintendent Laura Mitchell, Principal Alex Levine, you're involved in this. And we have, please introduce yourself just so for the purposes of the camera, who you are, what you do, and why you're here.
Sure. I'm Melanie Brown, I'm the Literacy Consultant for grades three through eight.
And I'm Holly Chopak, and I'm the Literacy Consultant for K-2.
Great. And you're from?
We're from Words of Advice.
Yeah, there we go.
I'm not sure where best to stand.
So, good evening, everybody, welcome to our literacy update. This, we're starting with an overview of our priorities, and over the next three board meetings, we'll be focusing on priorities. The first tonight is literacy, the next board meeting will have social-emotional learning and technology, and the last one will be facilities and sort of a culminating share out of all of our findings to inform our next district priorities. So just a quick overview, our priorities right now for the last three years have been literacy, technology, social-emotional learning, and facilities. And the question is, how and why were they selected? They were selected through a pretty rigorous process. We spoke to, I spoke with board members for their input, we visited our high schools for their input, their experiences, ideas, suggestions, and recommendations. We spoke to our K-8 students through student government representatives, as well as classroom visits. We invited community and parents to come in and share their experiences, ideas, and recommendations, and we gathered all of this data and put them into large buckets. And the largest buckets were literacy, technology, social-emotional, and facilities. So it was a community-minded endeavor where shared thinking and shared decision-making used to inform these district priorities. So who's responsible for these district priorities? We all are. We've all decided that they're super important for the success of our students, for our staff, for our board, for our district as a whole, and so we've all taken responsibility in various ways to ensure that these priorities are supported and thrive. And what is our timeline? Well, our timeline is coming to an end, so that's why we're talking about this, we're giving you an overview of the successes and some of the things that we're struggling with, and how should we move forward for the next three years? What are our district priorities? Are they going to remain the same? Are they going to grow? Are we going to shell some and bring in some other district priorities? But we'll only know that towards the end of the data collection process that we're in right now. One part of the data process that we added this year was meeting each staff member. So we're in the process of meeting almost 50 people individually to talk about their successes, their ideas, we're tapping their institutional memory, as well as the new teachers who are here, who are bringing in fresh ideas as well. So that's where we are right now.
So, good evening, everyone. So just speak to Laura's point two about who's responsible for the district priorities. So we felt this was representative of just how it takes the community of all of us and collective stakeholders, Board of Education, administration, community, parents, students, and that we all share an equal role in that process as well, whether it's the district priority process, or whether it's really any endeavor we take, committees, what have you, with the goal in mind, and with the graduation cap of our students being contributing citizens to society, but also successful in their graduation. So we felt this, and we'll revisit this throughout the process too, just as a reminder, just of the importance of all of our collective roles in this process at the end.
Please feel free to ask questions along the way, but we also have time at the end if you want to give some warm and cool feedback in how, what we should do next.
I'm going to bop over to your computer just to follow along with the slide, okay?
Yeah.
I have a little technological difficulty.
Mine's coming up?
It wasn't coming up on hers.
It came up on mine, you want mine?
Uh, not yet.
It was moving very slowly.
All right, I don't want to ruin the jazz, but.
But we can move the board around a little bit.
Yeah, that might be better. I just, yeah, that may be better. I think it's going to be okay. I think we're going to be okay.
I also wanted to add why we
Go for it.
Why we have these district priorities is because they are directly aligned with our mission statement. I'm just going to read our mission statement, sometimes I don't think we read it enough, to remind ourselves, you know, the work, the good work that we're doing, and the whys behind it. "The Garrison Union Free School District is dedicated to creating a mutually caring, respectful, and stimulating environment. This will foster self-esteem and love of learning by empowering our children to excel academically, socially, creatively, and physically." So I feel that the district priorities feed right into them, support our mission statement in different ways. Just wanted to show a little literacy from the superintendent's perspective, sort of what I'm looking at from the top and what we're considering to bring into the district. We, Alex and I have worked on the budget, just how are we going to foster, sustain, enhance, and strengthen our literacy program here at Garrison School. And we use the budget with classroom libraries with the help of GSEF. So we have classroom libraries in K-8 through 8, and we're using some more of our budget to enhance and strengthen those libraries. So we're bringing more high-interest books in, more leveled books in, to foster the love of reading, and to help students grow over time, and they're making great gains. We also used budget for Fanta's and Penel and Renaissance Star 360, those are tools that we're using to monitor student growth. We didn't have them before. We did have, I forget what the AIMS web we had. We moved over to Star 360 because it gives us better information, more data that we can use to inform instructional decisions that we're making. Also under budget falls professional development as well. We invest a lot of time, funding, and personnel into making sure that our teachers are successful in implementing the literacy programs that we have adopted, which is a unit of study in reading and writing. Also, from the superintendent's perspective, looking at personnel, our hiring process is rigorous, it includes committees that have administration and teachers, part of the process, and in our hiring process, there are initial interviews, then team interviews, and there's also a writing component to that. So we're, even in our hiring process, we're looking for readers and writers, making sure that they're in good alignment with the work that we're doing, and they can also strengthen and deepen the work. And last year, or the year before, we brought in an interventionist. We looked at our own personnel, we heard our teachers speak about the need for supporting our students in RTI, response to intervention, and making sure that we have a pure tier one, two, and three, and using those Fanta's and Penel, that data, to inform the interventionists who can give targeted help to those students who are form below grade level. And that, we developed a new position for that, because we thought it was that important, and she's making that much of a difference in our students' education. And then lastly, professional development. Words of advice, I think we've had over 50 days of professional development over the last two years for our K-5, and we added the special ed, and now we have a full team in middle school, so they have delved deep into the work. And then our in-district, contractually, teachers can be facilitators of in-house professional development, and they can also attend those in-house professional development, and we made sure that the in-house professional development is aligned with the district priorities. So three of them that I chose, we had a Renaissance Star 360 training, writing across literacy, and News ELA, so those directly support the work that we're doing in our priorities and our literacy specifically. Just a quick overview.
So in the same token, so just as we discuss literacy from superintendent's perspective, so now to kind of get a little more granular in the sense of looking at what this looks like in the classroom, so first and foremost, observation and evaluation, so a lot of these conversations I have before an observation afterwards, so a lot of questions, is the language shared and common throughout, within a grade level, and vertically aligned as well? You know, overall, I can say yes, but I think that this is a great medium in any school setting to make sure and understand that we're implementing things with fidelity, and to see how we're improving, or what our areas of improvement may be. Pre-observation, I may ask questions about how teachers will go ahead and activate prior knowledge and truly engage their audience. During the observation, I may look for ways that there are examples of formative or summative assessments that are then used to inform future instruction. Post-observation will then be reflecting upon that and how that data is then used, which we'll speak to later in the presentation, a lot to delve through in very little time during the day, but all very useful. It's so important that that's really our first and foremost charge, to talk about teaching, learning, performance of our students, and how we as servant leaders, which I believe Laura and I truly regard ourselves to be, of how we can serve our students and our staff in the form of professional development consultants, whatever their needs may be. Because essentially, in our opinion, making literacy a community effort with guest readers and author visits and enrichment clubs, it really indicates that we are truly all teachers of reading, is my belief. So some of our programs with, some of which are guest readers, one of my passions and loves is when I am invited into classrooms to be a guest reader myself, reading The Frog Principle in first grade. I have very fond memories as an elementary teacher myself, whether it was reading Wonder with fifth grade, the BFG, The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe, the value of interactive read-alouts and just those conversations, and the importance, whether it's kindergarten, third, fifth, and beyond in the secondary level, that it really is a lot of importance because kids need to hear the value of just inflection, fluency at any and every level, and we see it here. We have our publishing parties in first and second grade, wonderful celebrations that are very well attended, and just a celebration of our students' work, and that they're able to then share, which is of the utmost importance. If you travel down the hallways, well, you'll see literacy being embedded in other content areas in the fifth grade, where you'll see different diseases being explored, some of which I had not heard of before, so if you take, traverse the hallways, it's, you learn quite a bit, but it's just the value of really believing that literacy is embedded and should be interdisciplinary in all of our content areas. Course drop, everything and read, which wonderful support of the PTA, so having authors like Stephen Savage and Dan Salmeri, Claire Legrand, and then fostering partnerships with local businesses, businesses such as Split Rock Books. And of course, our PKE enrichment opportunities, one such club is, I believe they've named themselves the Garrison Newspaper Club Thing, if I'm not mistaken. And one of their interviews was with me, and I then had shared on social media, and had some local administrators read about my comparisons to Adam Levine, so they really truly valued the fact that the power of digital literacy and then sharing their content across mediums, it actually was quite powerful for them. And as I mentioned before, this is all in the interest of serving our kids, you know, our community, and of course, our staff, because we truly do believe in the value of lifelong learning. Literacy in action. You'll see a few of our readers in action, as well as our team. They are all smiling as well, it really is.
Okay, so I think I'm going to stand over here, it's a little, feels like I have my back to you. But Holly and I just wanted to sort of share a little bit about the story of professional development, as it's happened with us over the last two and a half years, and then explain to you a little bit about the FNP data and what it looks like so far, in terms of the way kiddos are growing. So when we come on any given day, we work within a cohort, so Holly will work with the K-2 teachers for a day, and I'll work with the 3-5 teachers for a day, or the 6-8 teachers for a day, as well as the special ed teachers are now a part of that work. And we'll spend either like a third of the day with one grade level, and/or we'll spend all day together with the cohort if we're looking at a specific topic. But most of our work in the beginning was helping teachers to implement the curriculum that had been adopted, the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, units of study in both reading and in writing. And then we sort of noticed right away that there wasn't an assessment system that felt closely aligned to the actual curriculum, so we had suggested that the district adopt the Fanta's and Penel Benchmark Assessment System, with which the teachers took on immediately, and that we've been using ever since. And the reason why we wanted to grade in Fanta's and Penel is it's the most rigorous assessment system that's available for teachers in our opinion, that assesses higher-level comprehension, even at Level A, which is early kindergarten, you will get questions on interpretation and understanding author's craft. So it's a really nice match, not only for how do we teach kids, but also with the curriculum that they've adopted. And then we've spent a fair amount of time this year trying to focus in on what are we doing about our kiddos that are not making expected or typical growth in either reading or writing, and like what are some other things we can be doing when the whole class curriculum's not meeting the needs of those kids. And then in terms of like our actual visits, we're focusing on either the parts and pieces of reading workshop, the parts and pieces of writing workshop, read aloud and class conversation, and then component work, which is especially important in K-2.
K-2, we focus on shared reading, where everyone is, everyone has eyes on the text, and they're all reading at the same time, but the point of it is that the teacher's voice starts out loud and gets lower, and the children's voice gets louder. The other thing that was adopted in K-2 is a phonics program, which is foundations, which kids receive daily instruction on every day and grow across up to second grade.
And it's important just to sort of know that on our visits, like in the very beginning, the first year and a half, whenever Holly and I would come, we would plan a lesson with the teachers, we would go into a classroom, we would model the lesson, and then we would reflect or debrief it, and we've started to switch this past year to having more of a co-teaching or a coaching model, where we'll still plan lessons, but now the teachers will do the teaching in the classroom, and we'll be coaching in and giving feedback, and then we reflect.
And it's also really nice when we spend a day with a whole cohort, teachers are able to watch each other teach and provide feedback to each other. So they're saying things like, wow, I noticed, you know, the animation and how you did that, and I'm going to start doing that kind of thing. Because one thing that's really powerful is the opportunity to watch someone else teach.
And you're a really small district, so it's not like you have five kindergarten teachers that can like get together at lunchtime and compare notes, so it's one of the reasons why we try and sometimes work in cohorts and not just at the grade level. So the, probably the biggest, most important work that Holly and I feel really proud of is the adoption of the Fanta's and Penel Benchmark Assessment System. So teachers were all trained, the teachers that were here at the time, in August of 2017, they spent a full day with us, learning how to administer the assessment, we practiced on videos of kids, and then how to analyze the results. K-3 teachers made the decision that they would assess four times a year, so they assess kids in September, November, March, and June, and that matches the typical growth that kiddos will make in those grades. In fourth through eight, students are assessed three times a year, September, January, and June, and usually that's because it takes a lot longer to move through levels as kids move up from the ranks.
And those are formal assessments, there are also informal assessments going on all the time. So in K-2, kids are moving through levels a lot faster than in the upper grades, so teachers aren't waiting until that formal assessment window to move kids. They're constantly monitoring growth and deciding if they need to administer a running record and then move a reader on to a new level.
Which is what we want, we don't want kids stuck in levels, and we don't want leveled reading to be the only reading that kids experience. But the data's really clear that in order for kids to grow, they need to do a certain amount of just right reading every single day, and so that's like the way that we try and support teachers.
Do you, have you, I just wanted to pause and ask if, would you prefer us to wait to the end before we ask questions, or, there's a lot of information flowing, I'm wondering if you're, who would want to respond to a particular slide, if there's any particular questions, board members?
If we were teachers right now, we would say turn and talk, so you could guess.
You don't want me to do that. We'd be here all night. I just wanted to give you guys an opportunity, so, okay? Good? All right, onward.
So on the Fanta's and Penel Benchmark Assessment System, there's two kits that go with the assessment system, so there's what they call Benchmark Assessment System one and two. Assessment System one is generally for K-2 teachers, and it's levels A through N. Assessment System two is generally for upper-grade teachers, and it's L through Z, you get three levels of an overlap. The assessments, though, look at the six key areas of reading development, so the first thing that gets assessed is a child's accuracy, can they say and decode the words that are on the page, their fluency, do they have intonation, do they attend to punctuation, is their reading rate solid enough that they won't lose comprehension? Literal comprehension, which is the retell, so can the child say back to you the gist of what they read? Inferential comprehension, are they able to grow their own ideas that match the text but aren't on the page? And interpretive comprehension, are they able to make connections outside of the text to their own life or to the world? And then there's a writing about reading component, which we suggest that everybody can, you can use it kindergarten and up, and it includes more drawing, but we sort of suggest that second grade and up, everybody be using it, and be using it in a very rigorous way, because it will be the way that children are assessed on state exams, starting in third grade, so we don't want to not have bad data about how kids are doing. And then what often happens in a lot of places is that teachers, even when they're good at the assessments, what they'll do is they'll finish an assessment, and they'll say, okay, here's your level, right, and then that's the information. What we work the teachers on is that the reason we adopted this assessment system wasn't just to find a child's level, but to also make an instructional plan for them. So here in Garrison, teachers actually find two reading levels for every child, they find their independent reading level, books that they can read on their own without teacher support, and their instructional level, books that they can read with attention from the teacher. And so at that point, what we're having teachers do is they find two levels for every child, and then at the instructional level, they determine two goals for every child. They could determine more goals if they want to, but generally, two is fairly sufficient. And the way that you come up with the goal is if you look at the first point on the assessment where the child broke down. So if they don't pass the accuracy, then you know that that's going to be a goal. But let's say they pass the accuracy and they pass the fluency, but they don't pass the literal comprehension, then you know that's going to be a goal. There's also a rubric that comes from the Fanta's and Penel kit, but we go beyond just saying, here's the number that they got, and instead break it down for, here's what I should be teaching you to.
Okay, so this is, all right, so you're developing, you've got a diagnostic tool, and then you have a plan for engagement.
Yes, and we're asking them to do this for every reader that they work with.
And who's doing this, exactly?
Classroom teachers and out of classroom support, because the truth is, it's quite time-consuming.
Right, I do. This is an incredibly time-consuming process, it's meaningful, and it helps us implement the programming and fidelity, but really, understanding the three to four times that it's benchmark per year, that's not also including the time that if a student does need additional progress monitoring, then that's additional times as well, so it is an incredible amount of time that our teachers are doing a phenomenal job.
Is it a paper-based or computer-based?
Paper-based.
Okay, so then there's no computer spinning out the plan for you to focus on?
No.
You have to do this manually?
Yeah.
Which I think is good, but a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, although the teachers, like, one of the things that's so nice about it is that once you get good at it, you start to like, we teach teachers how to listen for patterns and trends, and so like, you start to know right away, like, they need to say these three things, and if they haven't said these three key things in that particular area, then I know what to teach them to. They come up with what we call an optimal instructional plan for their class, so they say, you know, based on a child's relationship to benchmark, here's the instructional plan for that child, and then they revise that plan based on the reality that they live in, because we don't get three hours a day to teach reading, so then we have to kind of make it all fit in. And then we encourage them to then consult out of classroom support, because we want to see, out of classroom support, whether it's cushion or pull out, you know, using the same information that the classroom teachers are using. And this was, you know, a year-long journey for them, because you don't just learn it all in the first round, and they've done incredible work with it.
Did you do some of the assessments of students, like, sitting with the teachers? Yeah, we spent a lot of time last year when we were here, we timed our visits around when it would be formal assessments, so that part of our time could be sitting with teachers with a reader they might have had a question about, or they weren't sure, and just to give them feedback on how it was going, help them decide on instructional goals or plans.
And they've watched us assess your students, and then we've watched them assess your students, so it's a, it takes almost like at least three visits just to get to a fairly okay place with the assessment system.
Excellent.
So one thing that, you know, it might seem really technical, but I think it's important to know whenever you're looking at any data, is what the research actually says about how kids move through reading levels. So this is compiled from Jen Saravallo, Jan Richardson, Dick Allington's research around what's the typical time spent levels, and before we break this down, I just want to be clear that these numbers are based on highly supportive conditions. So it means you've got like a strong reading workshop up and going, kids are getting enough time to reach out great books every single day, your classroom libraries are robust, and your teacher's knowledgeable about what you need and how to get you there. But at levels A through B, it takes anywhere from two to four weeks to move through a level, C through G is four to six weeks or so for a level, H through L is going to switch to more six to eight weeks per level, and then you can see, M is September of third grade benchmark, so you can see once kids get into those higher upper grades, the movement, the progress really slows down. So then you're looking at, you know, 12 to 14 weeks through a level, and B and higher, which is June of fifth grade, you know, it can take as much as four and a half months for a child to move through a level, and again, under really good conditions.
Well, and then merely levels two, A through G, the focus is on learning how to decode, different strategies for decoding, and then around level I-J, readers start to make a shift because they've learned all of the decoding strategies they're going to learn in their life, and it starts to be about comprehension, and that's where second grade makes a big shift. It goes from learning how to read the words to learning how to think about what you're reading.
But even at the lower levels, one of the reasons why we like the Fanta's and Penel assessment is you have to still be able to retell and infer, even at those lower levels, and a lot of other assessment systems don't take that into consideration.
Kids in kindergarten and first grade are still learning comprehension strategies, but primarily what they're doing has, in their independent reading, is practicing those decoding strategies.
Once a middle, let's say, assuming a middle schooler, he tests out at level Z. So different districts make different decisions, and our recommendation, especially based on the fact that we had, you know, one teacher, we had a lot of kids do a class, even with extra support, that most kids who make it to level X are what we would call self-propelled readers. I've never had a child get to X and then somehow not get to Z, so I've said that it's perfectly acceptable to stop at X, but if we wanted the data, we certainly could continue through Z, we just have to make that clear, you know.
Okay, so this is second grade, and again, benchmark would be around a level J, which is again focused around starting to learn comprehension strategies. If we look at November of 2017, kids that were far below benchmark were about 20 percent, below was about 16 percent, and then on and above was somewhere around 64 percent. If we look at November of 2018, kids who have had this curriculum, all of first grade, the numbers obviously have dropped in a good way and risen in a good way. Far below has gone down 4 percent, below about 9 percent, on and above is somewhere around 87 percent.
Okay, so, you might want to go over that again. Who are we looking at exactly?
So these were second graders, second grade students in November of 2017, and second grade students in November of 2018. So we're looking at the same grade.
Oh, this is pre-intervention in your mind.
So this was the first year we implemented the reading curriculum and the Fanta's and Penel assessment.
You're looking at the efficacy of the implementation of the curriculum.
Within that grade level.
With a big asterisk about small sample size, is that the deal?
Yeah.
I don't want to throw water on the fire, I just want to like, all right.
But these, so these are not the same students?
No.
So this is two different kids across your room. What we're working on is implementing the curriculum.
They're not, they're not looking at measuring student progress, they're looking at the effectiveness of the implementation. Have we, is the curriculum having an impact?
Yes, and the professional development, the teachers, you know, how they're implementing.
Got you, got you.
Because anyone can buy the book, but translating that book so it makes sense to a seven-year-old is a really different process.
And that is an important distinction, just as we move through later on to the Renaissance Star 360, as well as revisit the state assessment, so it's within that same lens of not looking at individual student or cohort progress, but progress within a grade level to verify that we are implementing it, and how well we are implementing, assessing, and then the efficacy of our practices, so.
But is there a time when you do, if you want just the group of the class?
Oh, you could track everybody. We don't have that presented here tonight, but yeah, you could do that.
New York State.
Yeah, but you still, like you mentioned earlier, about trying to keep everybody on the same level in that grade, but isn't there, are children different?
100 percent.
Oh, no, we're not trying to.
No, I don't think you.
I guess I misunderstood, because of the very beginning.
Your class is going to be comprised of all different levels.
That doesn't, okay.
So they have a benchmark of a level J for second grade.
At this time of year.
And this is normed nationally.
Yes, this comes out of, this is actually matched to the Teachers College curriculum, which is what the teachers have adopted here, so we're using their benchmarks.
The notion there is that are students performing below, far below, on, or above the J level, which is what they're determining is appropriate second grade performance.
At that point in the year.
Yeah, at that point.
Okay, just translating, so.
Thank you, you could translate.
No, that's fine, yeah, no, we were clear, please, let's, so the next slide is going to look at fourth grade. So again, remember, fourth grade and up, assess September, January, and June, so we're going to look at January here. So in January of 2018, we had So in January of 2018, we had fifty-one percent of students were below or far below benchmark. In January of fourth grade, you're looking at around level R, always have to do my fingers. And then we had about forty-nine percent of kids were reading on or above benchmark. One year later, same grade, right, taking a look at how the curriculum is supporting and how teacher's implementation is supporting kids. Those numbers, you know, made some really nice improvements. So our, you know, far below and below was then known as ever higher than for math staff development. Forty-three percent? Yeah, you don't want me talking about math. And then on and above is fifty-six percent of readers. And then the sixth grade data in JR 2018 was definitely alarming. I'm not going to sugarcoat it for you. So when we did the Fonz and Penel assessments, every child was assessed at being far below or below benchmark in January. And then a year later, with implementing the curriculum, those numbers made some really nice improvements. So far below and below was then fifty-two percent, and on and above moved to forty-eight percent, right? And that's even with, you know, some staffing changes, right? So the curriculum lived, but we've, I've been working with different teachers in sixth grade between last year and this year.
Right, right, okay, great.
So still progress, but not as dramatic. But the teachers, you know, we've had, they've had less consistency in terms of the professional involvement, so. Whereas my pre five teachers have been the same, most of them I've been here. So, and then this was just to give the visual to show what it looks like from 2017, 2018 school year to the current school year.
This one's going to need some explanation. I think, before you hop in there, I just wanted, I think to Diana's point, one of the things that we struggle with when analyzing data is matching it to cohorts because of the size of the school, so small, that we can have extreme movements, you know. So sixth grade, 2018 is a group of twelve students, maybe, eleven students, something like that. And, you know, and then the next group is twenty some students, maybe, eight, maybe a little higher. Yeah, I think, so, data, you know, data that can sort of see how this is working with the same cohort over time is equally important for us, just to throw that out there. And I think this is sort of a little bit of that.
Yes, and I think that's a great point too, because the value of, and this, and I'll explain as best possible to get to questions, but the longitudinal nature of this, of this data. So we did begin officially, this is actually the spring assessment of beginning back in 2016, 2017. So over the course of time, using the same instrument, again, reducing the amount of variables, that the idea is after three years of implementation, four, five, and then ten years, we really start to understand within grade levels. Again, and we can disaggregate it as well, if you'd like to look at individual cohorts or students, but right now we're looking at how within our grade levels, with all these other coaching mechanisms and strategies, how well we're redefining and defining that line, so to speak. So longitudinal, over the course of time, and what this is called in Renaissance STAR 360, they call it a cross sectional datagram, which is basically, for example, looking at the fourth grade, as we discussed, from 2017, 18, in comparison with the performance of grade four in 2018, 19, two, completely different groups of students, but seeing how we are doing in that specific grade, which is interesting, as we noted in our size, a unique district of one, maybe two teachers within the district, where you may have multiple teachers that you're looking horizontally how it's aligned. This, we're looking at, in most cases, one or two teachers. Versus looking at a growth model, which would look at individual cohort performance over time. So the coloring, which actually STAR Renaissance, and this is their coding, it's not necessarily how we use it. So anything that is green is considered to be on or above grade level. So it's similar language, but as was used before. Anything that's either blue, yellow, or red respectively, in their terms, is considered to be different required levels of more intensive interventions. So RTI, level one, two, three respectively, if more intensive supports are needed. For our purposes, when we administer a benchmark, if we see any students fall within the blue, yellow, or red, we then determine, okay, they are not on or above grade level, they're in need of additional supports, and that's when we then consult our interventionist, our outside classroom supports, determine what kind of additional program we can individualize and make an optimal and meet those goals that we were discussing. So it's really nice how all these parts start to really come together to form a unique program. And then if a student falls below, then every three weeks, we go ahead and progress monitor to see how they, what kind of progress they're making, and then to determine if we have to make adjustments to the program and the interventions we're providing, if more is needed, if we're seeing some growth. So those are the colors, and so a little, looks more complicated than really what is, what is being noted there. So again, we can begin to see as we see patterns and trends, which is really what we're looking at across these different assessment tools, to see that our kids in each of those grade levels are fairly steady in grade two, on the on or above level, as well as grade four. Note here, there are some anomalies like this. Technically, we're still in the May thirty first window, so not all of our sixth graders have had the time. And also given staffing changes and the time that's needed too. So that's why we have that blank, which will be filled by the end, if not June. And then also too, where we have nineteen of our second graders, that's more than likely that it's still in progress. That window's still open. The other important thing to note too, that our teachers are truly passionate about through our coaching as well, is that these interventions in these groups that are, whether they're pushing or pull out, they are completely fluid. So meaning that just as quickly as a student, if they are in need of that targeted intervention support, we make sure we create a program that meets that student where they are. And just, and if that student meets that target and is on or above grade level with all these multiple instruments, then we transition them or adjust our program accordingly. Which are, again, I think having that interventionist role and looking at those decisions we made, I think those are variables that have helped us to implement that with fidelity. Are there questions, you said?
There's a lot, okay, green is good. Blue, not so good, yellow, red, it can need a lot of work. Okay, so, but before we go, do you want to take a seat? Yes, slide on by. So the, okay, so you're looking at, similar thing, it's a, it's a different tool, but it's creating benchmark, right? Their benchmark, how does it compare to F and P?
Well, one immediate point, and feel free to jump in, one immediate point that you made that I think is great in how we're trying to be balanced in our high tech and low tech. So paper based for Fonz and Penel, this is actually done on computers, so.
This is independent, right? The kids sit and.
Yes, so this is where our, so, and that aligns to our technology initiatives of having the Chromebooks available for all students grades three to eight, as well as hybrid devices for the lower grades. So one can argue that may be a variable influencing the performance in this tool versus, so again, it's nice to have, I think, that balance. I think they would also measure a wide variety of skills, the types of questions that are asked, of course, are quite different.
We're not familiar with Renaissance STAR 360. It's not part of like the implementation of reading, reading workshop. It's a tool that the district uses, so I can't speak to it as well. But teachers have spoken to, like, we, one of the things we said we were curious about, which we have not done yet, would be to look at, take particular children and look at, is what the F and P predicting what kids will do on the ELA? Is what the STAR 360 predicting what kids will do on the on? And that's certainly work that could happen in the future, but we haven't.
I think that's a strong, that's a, this Renaissance STAR 360, if I remember correctly, there's a lot of dynamic components, you can, you can set up projections, you know.
Yes, there's a number of different.
It's also responsive, correct?
Yes, and I was just going, so there, there's a number of different types of reports and growth reports and the way the data can be presented. And yes, so as the students are taking the assessment, that it does, for lack of a better word, differentiate it live, so depending upon the responses, whether correct or not. So then the device then crafts the, you know, increasing complexity of the questions asked too. So one could argue, I think that it's nice that, again, we're trying to have multiple, so when we had the discussion back in November of one singular, you know, statewide assessment with a number of pros and cons and variables in and of itself, to have our own local assessments that are kind of balanced and cover those grounds as well, I think gives us a more accurate picture of where our kids truly are.
Can I stop you for a minute, Alex, and this?
Can I jump in and ask a question?
We have, yes, we have questions, but also this is a demarcation between assessing our reading and all this data is without writing, so.
Well, the Fonz and Penel has a writing component to it, but yeah.
In it?
Yeah, it's the last part of the assessment, so they answer prompt.
Is that pulled out from the data you're showing, or is that woven into the data?
So in the, the way that they use the assessment, all six categories help to determine the level. So if a child doesn't pass the writing about reading, then you would say they're not independent at that level. So it does influence.
The overall score. If we, can that data be segregated?
It could be, but the school would have to have a system for doing that, but yeah.
This is, this is important, okay.
I just, this is kind of, to get my head wrapped around this. So this is the Renaissance STAR 360. The other things you were giving us about the sixth grade and the fourth grade?
Yes, was F and P.
That's all hang.
Yes, and so, and I should have, I thank you, I should have made that. And that's why I had selected those specific grades. Thank you.
So in terms of determining, using this as a benchmark, determining who needs extra support, I'm curious as to which one of the programs, I understand that, you know, you look at everything altogether, but if one takes precedence, so I'm looking at, so grade four, 2018 to 2019, our current grade four, according to this one, is we've got eighty-six percent of students in green, eighty-six percent good, right? But going back to a couple slides before, fourth grade, current fourth grade, January 2019, is fifty-six percent on or above grade level. So that's a big difference. So what, what determines, you know, and I know, you know, we're, certainly, we make decisions about the budget, we know how much special ed costs. You know, do you then kind of pull back and be like, well, this one's saying good numbers? How do you make the decision about who gets, and how much?
That's a great question, I think that speaks to, again, these are the tools for assessment to give us the data, and then that's where we have our general education, special education teachers, our CSE process, or when we go through that process of really pulling all of the quantitative data, but then also the anecdotal and the qualitative evidence from the classroom too, to better inform, because to your point. And I honestly, I would have to see if, I would hesitate to say one takes precedent over the other. And often what we would say is it's a case by case, student by student decision. You know, but that's why we make sure that we have all these other measures, include when we have those conversations, that we don't just rely upon one assessment, which is, again, another reason why we don't want, we want to look closely at the state assessments, but not too closely to drive those decisions, which I think is something that we've, over years, embedded in, because there are a lot of districts, in my experience, that make those decisions based upon one assessment. And to your point, that takes time and money and so on and so forth. So a long way of saying case by case, but it's a good point.
But yes, everything is getting looked at?
Yes, absolutely.
The other, the other possible answer might be, feel free to correct me, is that the Renaissance doesn't account for the writing. So if you score really high on the reading, and then you bomb the writing and it adjusts the middle, and you might get that discrepancy, whereas, you know, I only know this because my son did it once.
I mean, I don't have the data, but I think it's pretty interesting to look at the, like, to look at particular children or cohort and compare the three, right? So what are we seeing in terms of F and P, STAR, and ELA, and see if there's like a closer match? Teachers College reports that their benchmarks are ninety percent aligned to passage of the ELA. So when kids are on and above benchmark, they're passing the ELA. So I feel really secure in that, but I can also tell you the F and P is designed to give an instructional plan for a child that matches with the curriculum. I don't know enough about STAR to say, you know, how true or not true that is.
Right, yeah, that's another point.
Yeah.
The precedent by, I guess, mandate is the ELA, the state mandate. If they score one or two in the state test, they have to get. Regardless of whether internal mechanism or anything. At the same time, it's good to have this more holistic view, because sometimes they burn out. Also, the test takers can burn out, right?
Yeah, and I do think a teacher sitting next to a child is a better assessing of the child's run out of stamina or steam, right, with the F and P, than what happens in front of the computer, which is not to criticize or, you know, obviously I'm very pro F and P for a lot of reasons, but I don't know that you're comparing apples to apples in this way, yeah.
Right, and I think that presents an interesting, as well, that we have students that you have to take into account, those students who may not have a coach or a teacher beside them and may be inclined in front of a screen to, because we can track how long they're taking per question, and if they are rushing through certain portions or not. So I think there's, it can be argued again, which is why I think it's important to have just multiple varied measures of assessment, and then also just talk about what we're seeing anecdotally in the classroom too, and really pull all that together to make those decisions.
Sure, just, I just wanted to highlight something. Did you say that F and P's benchmark of J is aligned with a three in the New York State?
So J is second grade, second graders don't test.
Sorry, sorry, but any benchmark is aligned with New York State three?
Yes. Highly aligned, I mean, there's always going to be outliers. There's some kids that are brilliant and just don't test well. There's some kids who guess well, like, it's not a one hundred percent match, but Teachers College reports like a ninety percent correlation between children that are on or above benchmark and passing the ELA. I don't know if that's true this year, if you saw the test this year, you'd probably be appalled, but that's another conversation. It was remarkably difficult this year.
Yes.
Before you switch off that other.
Back to the fourth grade.
I've gotten stuck on this data. It's percentage of readers, and then it's got the percentages, but you didn't use these numbers, you did math to change these numbers, right?
I was just adding together on the.
Yeah, she's just adding.
So what is she adding?
So on and above.
On and above, because generally kids that are on and above are three and four and really well.
So far below, that thirty percent, is that's incorrect?
Yeah, far below benchmark, yeah.
Or you may also say, Congress, you might say that there are fifty-one percent of our students were, did not meet.
Benchmark.
Oh, so that's where you.
Yeah, so it's important.
And I've been trying to figure out.
The reason, the reason why we have so many categories is the child that's.
No, that's.
The reason we have so many categories is the instruction that a child that's far below needs is different than a kid that's below. This could be a kid that's one level away from being on. This is a child, generally speaking, a year and a half or more below benchmark, and they need a very different instructional plan at that point. So you could just do on and not on, but it wouldn't help the teacher to be more precise in what they're figuring out.
Thank you, that, yeah, I was totally lost on that part.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to have one more math question.
Which one?
Renaissance 360.
Okay.
Renaissance STAR 360. Okay, so, students tested, that is the number of students in the class. So unlike state tests, every student gets tested, as opposed to students who opt out. Right, and that's safer for F and P. So my only question here is, I'm trying to do the years right. The very last one, 2016, 2017, grade six.
Yes.
Says eleven students tested.
Yes.
If I'm right, that is this year's current eighth grade. That's not the right number.
Right, and so, and, and that's why, and there could be any number of reasons, I honestly, this was variables. So it could have been, that was the first time that we were administering it, that spring is when we started with STAR, STAR Renaissance 360. It may have been a function of time, not having, but you're right, so that's why I wanted to point out too, like, this doesn't include all, it should eventually, once we get to the end of our benchmark date. But, but yes, some of those, especially when you look at that initial timeline, but I did like at least looking, because that gives us where, truly where we began.
So the students' testing numbers might be incorrect, more of them?
Well, I think in that year, they, I think they, I think I remember that they used that grade for some sort of pilot.
It may have been piloted as well.
And they could have only decided on kids they were worried about, you know, I don't know, but.
Okay.
Let you give me a step one.
That wasn't so bad.
It had a lot of colors. It had a lot of colors.
So, and now, so we move from looking at our local benchmarks in the assessment, so this is actually one of the slides we presented back in November. So we thought just to revisit and refresh our memories on the statistics and what they indicate. So this was in comparison, our performance with six hundred ninety or so districts within the New York State area. And again, this is longitudinal nature, it's just in this bar graph format, but again, looking at how grade seven performed in three different, you know, three different groups within that specific grade. So again, it's nice and consistent to look across these three measures. And for example, you'll see in 2016, well, I made that point already, ELA, grade three and grade four, you'll see significant improvement and change between 2017, which the color here with the purple and the red is probably there to see right in front of you. And then you'll see also where we talked about, you know, areas either concerned or in need of improvement when we look at our cohorts in fifth and sixth grade, the low average performance of this black line of where we fell in comparison with the average of New York State. So again, single snapshot, and to Melanie's point too, depending upon the year and depending upon the decisions of the state and what kind of variables and. and if you're taking tests on the computer, and all these, well, we have variables also influence that data realistically speaking. Then we can look to our.
You can also track the cohort, at least over three years, right?
Yes. Yep, that all this can be malleable. And then in grade seven and eight, just seeing the significant or steady improvement in comparison with, within the entire state, so. And I know there were some questions to clarify. I noticed that we did percentage of students who achieved a level three. This was done through a school meter, which we presented back in November, which is just a nice way to present the data in a different way. So this, we just kind of funneled it and narrowed it down a little bit more. So this is our district performance in comparison with fifty-five or so neighboring districts in Putnam, North Westchester, and Rockland County. And you'll notice as well, because we did have a conversation or question from the board of just how we can make sure we're being as representative as possible, not only for our on or above students, but also for those students who aren't meeting proficiency. Interestingly enough, I do not know why, it does not show our far below, or it does not allow to show that data. This is, the level two is as low as it will reflect. I do not know why it is.
Both two or higher?
Yes, but I mean, so that's not including those far below students. And in this, they do not allow that for some reason, which I'm curious about myself. So again, and this is also versus, we had percent versus percentile rank. So you're not able to hover over these, but just, for example, when I hovered over, and I have a specific percentile ranks. So in two thousand seventeen, when we had, so the purple bar here, our eighth graders performed better than ninety-eight point two percent of the fifty-five surrounding districts, is how this bar would be read now.
With two and above?
Sorry.
With two and above?
Yes. And by contrast, so we look at the following year, that there's a change. And so it would be interesting to note why that change had occurred. In fifth grade, then we had for two thousand eighteen, which would be our blue bar right here. So our students performed better than twenty-seven point eight percent of the surrounding fifty-five districts. So again, all of this can be presented, represented in different ways, formats, comparing by, and it's, you know, for our purposes too, we didn't necessarily look at just the eighteen component districts of our immediate area, so this was a little bit more of a wider lens in the Hudson Valley. But then I think in this next one, actually, we went back to, were there any questions about this? Go ahead to quickly or?
I think I'm just being slow. I'm struggling with this slide. So the slide before it, the header says Guffs versus New York State. The colored bars, Guffs, black one, New York State, if we're able to compare. But, so this one says, the next one says Guffs versus Putnam, Rockland, and Westchester, but it's not really a versus, right? It's, we are in Putnam, it's all combined.
Yes.
But we can't really look at these two slides to compare, because one is level three and above, and one is level two.
Yes.
Right?
Exactly.
Have to look at it in its own bubble, not in relationship to each other.
And that's an excellent point. It goes back to when we showed, originally when we showed the second grade and fourth grade earlier in the presentation of two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, and then eighteen to nineteen, by contrast. So again, that there's, and I can very easily pull up just for consistency's sake to see those students who are on or above level or at that level three, but yes, so that's a difference as well.
Right, and then this is, these are our percentile rank against that fifty-five core, the fifty-five different school districts in these counties. So if we, you say, you know, good news is, last year's two thousand seventeen eighth grade scored very high as compared to the rest.
Yes.
Bad news is there too. That's life.
Exactly.
And also, it's, you know, it's a, it's a window, and it's a particular data point, but it also corresponds to other data points we're seeing with certain cohorts needing a lot of focus and a lot of attention.
Okay.
All right. Jill, you cool?
And so finally, so this is just, and the link below, it should be active, so that, I won't pull that right now. It's kind of a convoluted graphic, so I thought it was better just to make it a little more concise. So this is looking at our own state performance, just comparing between two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. So within, so our own students at a level three, or so on or above proficiency level, increased from fifty-three percent to sixty-nine percent in comparison with the state levels or averages of forty to forty-five percent respectively. As well, between those two years, students scoring at a level two, so again, to be representative of all of our students, decreased from forty-one percent to twenty-one percent, which is a nice change. By comparison or contrast with the rest of New York State of a decrease thirty-four to thirty-one percent. And then finally, students scoring at that far below level or level one increased from six percent to ten percent, which again, is an area to then delve into further, see if it was, what kind of variables may have been in place or what have you, and in comparison to the state of twenty-six percent to twenty-four percent.
This is, so you're looking at discrepancies?
What I, what I just did is just kind of pulled the, I guess, the highlights. If you, if you pull that link up, it just shows basically a continuum of our progress. So this was just pulling those points, and I can.
I see.
No, not necessarily.
I got you, I got you.
Will work.
I got you. You narrated, you made a little narrative.
Figured we had enough colors before, so.
Oh, I see.
But it's there if you'd like later.
Thank you.
So we're just going to finish up with recommendations, and these are coming from interviewing the staff, and then talking with leadership about what folks are hoping for next year. So there are still some needs around materials in the building, and so teachers have requested more guided reading sets, because that's a big part of work that they do with kids. There's a set of material that Fanta and Mel calls their short reads, and they basically look like news articles, but they're leveled, I mean, you get like six copies each. Especially upper grades found those very useful this year, would like more of those. Nonfiction books, in general, a lot of the library investment, the initial investment was into the fiction library, and it's been incredible, but kids need to have access to more nonfiction and informational texts across a variety of levels. And then in upper grades, they were looking for more book club sets. So that's when you buy six to ten copies of the same title, and kids read the same book together in small groups. In terms of professional development, the K two teachers have expressed wanting to look deeper into physics and word study across reading and writing, and how to create small groups within both the reading unit and the writing unit, to help kids who are both struggling when it comes to word work, and also support those kids who might need some more of a push, the high flyers in their class. And we should say that the past two years, across K, across everyone, actually, there's been ten days during the school year of staff development, so roughly one day a month. And so we were looking to sort of wing down the K five especially. So K two was looking for five days, but being all five days would be around this topic. In grade three to five, they expressed interest in having their topic of study be around conferring with readers. So they feel like they have a very good handle on like a whole class instruction, but we will not start working more on what do you do when kids are reading independently to support them. With grade six to eight, because of the staffing turnover, and we were hoping to have another ten to twelve days of professional development next year. And that would actually be sort of doing the work that happened in K five over the last two years, so still focusing a lot on the curriculum and learning the Fanta and Penel assessment system. The support team staff, these are the special ed teachers that either will push in or pull out this year. I started working with them when I come for grade six to eight, actually, periods one and two, I worked with these teachers, because we wanted to make sure they are, you know, really aware of what's happening inside of the classroom, so they can be either supporting that or differentiating. So we meet on the same days as the middle school team does, or they want to continue that same work next year. And then there was some, you know, conversation around potentially having like literacy across content and starting a study group around that. What does it look like when we translate it into social studies and science?
And I think just to speak to some of the requests in terms of the guiding reading sets, which would absolutely be a wonderful asset, as Melanie had noted too. So I'm just, for me, taking copies and notes from some of the libraries. But the library that we have also built upon as well, that has given our kids so many different independent choice, so when we have our independent instructional levels, that those texts have been just a wonderful asset to our kids within both elementary and secondary setting, because those libraries are a great asset. And then again, we had discussed through kind of the more intensive training schedule as well, to really balance out the training and begin in specifically in the area of ELA literacy, but then expand across, you know, in interdisciplinary fashion, across content areas as well. And what will be nice too, is now that we've invested years of time, we'll start to see those students as they progress, the language becomes shared, the practices become shared. So those students who are familiar in the intermediate grades three, four, five, you know, as our teachers are becoming proficient in that language and working with Melanie and Holly, you know, it will, it will meet somewhere in the middle, which is, which is nice as well, so. Any questions?
I think a nice piece to that too is, I think it was last year you came and spoke with parents. You worked with parents and a teacher team.
Yeah.
So maybe more of that too, so that parents have the shared, shared understanding, shared language. So when their kids are at home, they can support what we're doing here during the day. How many, and I know it's new with the middle school and turnover and all that, but is the social studies teacher, like, who do you, who do you work with? Or who are you going to work with in the middle school?
So this year, it's in the two periods with the support team staff, and then the rest of the day on middle school days, I'm with Jennifer and Lauren. Jennifer is, you know, taking on three curriculums all at once, so I get you now.
Jennifer.
Christian Iver.
I won't say.
There are a lot of Jennifer's.
Hershey either.
Yes, apparently it's very decodable, but that's not my strength. I am a grammar person, so.
Bright cherry.
And I was talking to Monica, so.
I mean.
But I have that. But she's learning sixth grade reading, sixth grade writing, and then seventh or eighth, seventh and eighth grade reading or writing, because they have the one period in a day. So we do a roller coaster model in seventh and eighth grade, where they're in a reading unit of study, and then a writing unit of study in alternates, so. But at any given time, it's for, you know, curriculums.
And along that line, the middle school.
Curriculum, but I think she knew workshop teaching.
I see.
Yes.
Questions?
I guess my other question is, and I don't really know how to phrase it. This is, you know, this is very helpful and informative, but it looks like you're looking at a huge amount of data, and you're getting one-on-one time with all of the students. As from the graphs, we can see that this year's current sixth grade and seventh grade have fallen dramatically for the last several years. You know, and then unfortunate situations with staff turnover and middle school and all of that. So I guess, so A, what sort of intensive work is, can be done to remediate that situation? And you're looking, you're tracking kids from, you know, from the very beginning now. Hopefully, that situation won't happen again, but if we get another, you know, again, we're such an unusual and small school, that, you know, everybody gets to group together in these, in these parades. So if we've got another grade that is starting to decline, starting to make that progress, what, how can we jump in quickly beyond what we're already doing to really ensure that this doesn't, that it doesn't happen again? That we really keep everybody as much as possible as close to grade level and above?
I think the, I think the adventure, and to Melanie's point as well, to frame the understanding of how unique we are and atypical in that we have someone who has been wonderful in coming in mid-year and teaching not one grade, not two, but three, on top of attending the professional development and really embracing it and implementing with immediacy. But we understand too, that time is of the essence in our kids, this is, that's the center of what we're doing. So I think what we do have now is that we've spent that time and found someone full-time. And again, I don't, I, there's probably a better term in terms of a linchpin, but that's the foundation of where it begins within the reading and writing workshop model. But then with intentionality, as we talked about, it's in the interest of the staff and collectively as well, to make sure that this is a conversation in social studies. You know, we've already had that conversation of how we can integrate across those curriculums, which already happens pretty naturally between writing and writing on nonfiction and history and what have you, and then extending it to science and to, so the idea would be then eventually, within that secondary setting, that this becomes shared language. So whether or not we have changes with individuals, we have built capacity. Where it hasn't within our elementary staff too, we have people, and our elementary teachers changed grade levels, and they're flexible and malleable as well, so that, but it's not as drastic. We still have that capacity, it's built, been built over the course of a few years. So that may take, again, a little bit of time, which I know is, time is of the essence, but I think with what we've been doing now, I think those are really some great steps, at least in that direction.
Questions? Jill, give me a follow.
I'm curious about how special ed testing meshes with all of these assessments. I'm wondering if, if there's a, Pearson has an assessment with Sally Shaywitz for dyslexia at the kindergarten level. I'm just wondering if we can learn more about what happens for special education students in ELA in conjunction with all of this that we've learned about.
So if I'm understanding correctly, some additional alternative assessments that would kind of meet that subgroup a little bit better than maybe the Fanta and Penel, or in addition to, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm wondering what the district does when you have a student who's, say, below J for whatever, whatever grade we were talking about, that was second grade. And then, does the teacher make a recommendation to the committee on special education to do an intervention, or like, where does the?
I believe so, yeah.
Well, and that, and that would speak to, again, the response to intervention process, which I was speaking to, so very similar, and then, and working with, and there are layers as well. So we have Ms. Green in the intervention's role, as well as Ms. Van Decker. So they work very hard to facilitate that process of collecting that data or those recommendations, whether they may come as a concern from a parent, or something that's noted through these assessments, or just anecdotally in a qualitative form in the classroom. But then that's then taken to that subcommittee, and then if it's determined that there can, interventions can be put in place at that level, then that's, you know, done immediately, progress monitor. But then if we determine that more is needed, then that's where we move progressively into committee for special education, have those conversations. So it's a progression, sometimes it can be slow, but it is, it is methodical too. And a lot of time is taken also to make sure that we collect that data accurately with fidelity as well, so that when it comes to table, that everything is really, you cross our T's and that are I's, so to speak. That's your question.
I think so. I think.
You're, you're asking, what's the protocol?
Yeah.
Okay, so a student, you know, takes a Renaissance thing, they don't score very high. Does that trigger a particular inquiry? Is that what you're asking? Like, sort of, what is the mechanism by which someone goes about getting the attention they need?
Yes.
I feel like a human translator today.
Through these, yes, thank you. So basically, so through these different varied assessments, so, and for a lack of better words, so that would either flag to the teacher, whether it's general education, special education teacher, that if they're, we're not performing at a certain level, to then have those conversations, which happen throughout the day, whether it's formally, informally. So we spoke about that in the coaching model, but in the observation process. So this is continued, so it's, I don't want it to seem as well that these are only happening in formalized, you know, meeting settings. This is constant, and because our teachers, and we all really truly need to take that time to have those conversations about our kids, so that we can come to table informed. And then, as we said, so then it becomes a progression. But that's, is, this is the idea, is this is where it starts, and then we then determine in levels gradually what kind of targeted interventions we can provide to help those kids and meet them where they are.
It can be classroom level, tier one, you just start to have a level. Tier two is, that's when interventions will come in, and say, provide, or quick pullout, and provide targeted support. And then the third tier includes more of the specialized team. So that's sort of their process.
The earlier the better.
Yes.
The, so I have some questions that, you know, I know Sue. The, I'm being mindful of Sue here. But this is like a big, this is a, this is a big priority.
I feel like we're here, so.
For us, this is, you know, this matters in a way that, everything matters that we do, I suppose, but this really matters that we get this right. And I think everything we've done so far has been good. So my feeling is that, you know, just, my own personal opinion is that, I'm not, you know, the state of it, state of, the level of education in New York State, I feel like, as compared to the rest of the. So my feeling is that, you know, just, my own personal opinion is that, I'm not, you know, the state of, state of, the level of education in New York State, I feel like, as compared to the rest of the country is kind of the middle of the road, right? At least that's how we score demographically, right? When you, you know, when you look at the big picture, let's say, that's student performances, right? We always come in like twentieth or something, right, twenty-third, seventeenth, something.
Tricky though, because different states have different tests.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not saying we're a national test, that would be much more telling in that way, but.
Well, I think when you look at the national exams and they do that comparative thing, right? So we definitely want to make sure that our district is performing as optimally as possible. Because you want to be a high-performing district in a, you know, a state, in any state, but certainly, that's what we aim for, right? And I guess the question is, for you, for me, I think this is one of the ways we get there. I think this is, I think reading and writing is transformative for a district, especially in the K through A. It's, it can be transformative. So there are two, one quick question about writing benchmarks. Do they exist? Are we implementing them? What are the benchmarks? Because they are close to what we would call outcomes, correct?
Yeah, so the, the units of study at Teachers College, they recommend, and K two absolutely does this, and I think it's in parts and pieces in grade three, eight. They have what they call on-demand assessments for each one of the genres. So before you teach anything, the kids take an on-demand assessment. Generally, the teacher reads them a prompt, something like, you know, think about an issue that you're really passionate about, write a, you know, write an essay that includes your claim, your supporting reasons, et cetera. And the kids get forty-five minutes to do like, what we would call like a flash draft, just give us your best work. They're then supposed to take that on-demand and use it to revise the unit of study that comes into curriculum and then make decisions about like the small group work or the confering work that happens during the kind of writing time. And then at the end of the unit, after kids have published their piece, which you can argue is somewhat teacher touch, because they've been helping them all along, they're supposed to take another, they can take another on-demand at that point. I can't say that we've implemented that like fully across K, but we certainly could. And Teachers College would recommend that you do that at least three times a year in the three different genres, so opinion or argument writing, narrative writing, and information writing.
Yeah, I, like with any type of.
So I can say one more thing, but there's no like national assessment like M and P or Star Renaissance for writing. Why? I don't know, probably because it's really hard to score and measure, I don't know, we send your results to, it's so biased in a way. But they do come with rubrics and we can certainly make that a priority.
And K two, we, they do do a pre and post that is worked into our calendar, which they use a rubric with. We also have been working on creating rubrics that would be attached to the published piece, that's a little bit differentiated because it is teacher touched. So then we can look across and see growth across the unit.
Right. Well, I, I think, you know, this is where our leaning on canned or produced curriculum doesn't work so well. We have to create our own expectations about what we want as a district when it comes to writing outcomes. What do we want a fifth grade writer to be able to do? How do we measure whether their writing is on target? Because if their writing is not, it's going to drag their holistic score down. And they're actually not going to be presenting as well as they could be, right? Because if you're scoring a one or like a low, like a high one, low two, and you're reading at a four, you're going to average out to a three, and everybody thinks it's a reading problem, when it could be a writing issue. And also, you, when you're, when you're writing, it's reinforcing your reading skills, obviously, right? So there's that.
Can I just remind you again, how long are our periods?
Not long enough.
Forty.
Forty-two minutes.
Right.
But you mentioned a forty-five minute.
Well, it can be forty-two.
No, no, I just.
What, what, what do you, you've been with us.
I just wondered if that's one slot.
It depends too, I mean, for a kindergartner, they're not.
They might not spend that long at high, but an eighth grader might.
And I think your, your point about just, and we have had that conversation that, and that's why this process is informative for us all in our respective roles of, that may be the next logical step, making sure that we are accurately. And it may be something we develop collaboratively within our district and determine those norms to see where our kids are. And some of those conversations when we visited O'Neill and Haldane High Schools, that that was a subject of conversation, of some students expressed how they may have struggled in that they really only focused on, on narrative forms of writing. And they really wished that when they came to that level of education, that they weren't ready for the, you know, responding to nonfictional pieces or opinion argumentative. So, so it's interesting that that's, that's a thread that we're starting. So that may be, as we go through the district priority process, or something that we look at, maybe that's our next step.
Yeah, I'd highly recommend it. The notion, the other question I have is, in your, I mean, you've been with us for three years now, right?
Two and a half, yeah.
Yeah, two and a half. We've got curriculum, we've got professional development, what are we missing? I mean, time, of course, and like just slow, you know, of course we have implementation, but what are we missing? What aren't we doing well enough to move these, move the, move the, move us forward in a more, less glacial pace?
When I started working at Teachers College, one of the things that like never left me is that it takes one year to learn to be a workshop teacher, it takes five years to become expert. And so, you know, the teaching of reading is wildly complicated and, you know, happens almost entirely inside of a child's head and, you know, it's really difficult. I wouldn't say there's anything that's not happening. I mean, my first recommendation would be not to just peter out the professional development, like, you know, whether you stay with us or move on to someone else, you know, like there's a choice that you'll have to make. But, you know, there are schools that work with Teachers College for, going on thirty years, like because, you know, things change and kids are really complicated, so I think that's one thing. I do think the schedule is playing an issue in fifth through eighth grade. So the transitions, right, between classes, seventh and eighth grade only has one period a day for ELA, so teachers have to make a choice of, is this going to be a reading unit or is this going to be a writing unit? So kids aren't necessarily getting instruction in both at the same time is a factor. But, you know, Malcolm Gladwell says it best, like the biggest fear of education is time. And I can sit here and tell you why I think you should have a humanities block model or why you should have two periods a day, but, you know, I don't teach bands and I don't teach math. And so I don't want to, you know, be unfair to like the complexities of your schedule.
Be unfair.
Well, I think we.
You're a little more prophetic, be un, I mean, like, that's, that's, I mean, I think humanities, I mean.
A lot of schools have switched over to a humanities model in middle school.
Because you can read in one and write in the other, and you can flip them back and forth and they can speak to you.
Yeah, you have social studies and ELA teacher together and you get a block time.
I thought we spoke at one point about, of extending the time. Like on a Tuesday, it would be a double history, on a Wednesday, it would be a double English. I thought we discussed that, maybe this was.
Maybe, yeah.
Worth discussing again.
Been here a while, so.
Similarly, you brought something up at the beginning, and I think it's relevant of, you're discussing, you know, an example of working with the teachers and then sitting in on somebody else's lesson and saying, oh, wow, that was great. That's obviously something that is very difficult for us to do, because oftentimes there's only one second grade teacher, et cetera. Would you, I would imagine you'd recommend, and how can we do it better to get the teachers to be able to work in more teams?
So, so this actually did come up really clear when I was meeting with Alex and Laura. I mean, it is probably to your benefit to think about having an in-house literacy coach at some point. Because right now, all the professional development is happening through a consulting model, which, you know, we're working really hard for here. Your teachers are working profoundly hard, but, you know, what you accomplish in one day a month versus getting feedback from a coach, you know, several times a week is, you know, it's dramatically different. And most schools that, you know, really take off in this work have an in-house.
Right, because they're getting, they're getting real-time feedback.
Yeah, yeah, and you've got somebody who knows everything about your building, like there's just, there's a lot that we can't speak to, you know. So it, it'd be worth it, but obviously it's another.
Another expense.
Right, and it's finding somebody. In a school that's this small, like most people would say, oh, then you'd hire someone, you know, one person per K, but the truth is, like, reading people specialize in literacy, because it's, it's a lot for one person to know. So in my perfect world, you have a K two coach and a grade eight coach goes in-house.
There hasn't been much talk about the role of parents and schools' relationship and conversations with parents about, there's been some talk about sharing the language of literacy.
Sure.
But I think it's, I would imagine it's more, it's more effective if they're actually reading together and reading, working together.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's real big payoff in having, you know, parent workshops or maybe even having like a series of workshops that are implemented next year. I would definitely recommend early on in the year. It's, it's somewhat tricky because the discrete knowledge that comes into teaching reading and writing in this way isn't easily transferable. So I feel like there are certain things that we could be, you know, informing families about and helping them to do more supportive work at home. But I wouldn't want to, you know, somehow have that be misunderstood for the level of expertise that the teachers carry around all of this work.
I think it's nice too, though, some of the buildings that I've worked in have like a family Friday and it's first thing in the morning, once a month, where parents can come in and be part of reading workshop. So they watch the mini lesson, they read independently with their child, sometimes the teacher will come up and confer with their child while they're sitting there, so they can see how that all happens. And it's not the same every month. It could be one month is around reading, one month is around read aloud. So then there's an idea of how kind of conversations about books that you're reading aloud at home can be happening.
Right, families usually get invited in for celebrations, but not for the.
The actual scene.
Yeah.
There's got to be kind of a.
Really good point.
There's got to be like a best practice for integrating parents into this web, so that what's being, just the whole, I mean, it is a practice, right? So you're going to get growth the more work you do, as long as the student has enough tools or enough strategies to be successful at it. But the simple practice of reading at home with a parent, it's also, you know, an identity thing. But there's got to be some sort of strategy for doing this on a district level, but.
Could also be a shift in.
Superintendent and the principal figure out.
And it could be a shift just much in, during Dr. Everything and Read Week, where we have multiple opportunities for parents to come, whether it's beginning of the day, the end of the day, just to your point, just come into school to read together. That maybe it's just a shift in, instead of concentrating, which is a wonderful week, and the kids get incredibly excited to meet authors and get their books signed. So why not, you know, to, to their point of just extending that or reconfiguring schedules, which, you know, maybe some logistics, but if it's worthwhile in the end and we feel that it's a priority, then we make those adjustments. Because, you know, as we pointed out before, that it's really going to make sure that it has to be inclusive of, of everybody in this picture, if we truly want to make sure that our kids are successful, so I think it's a good one.
I think.
I think that's a great idea, it shouldn't necessarily, I've ever, I've always felt that it shouldn't be limited to three times in that one week in October. Another, you know, another idea would be, I think, I think parents, oftentimes parents like the idea of reading aloud to their kids, but don't necessarily, it's hard to make the time. Right. I certainly struggle with that, and sometimes, you know, you don't know, parents don't know necessarily what to read, if they're not in touch with children's literature. It could be something that comes either from the teachers or even from the principal in weekly update or whatever, or just on the website of, hey, this month, we suggest reading, you know, these, you know, grades two to eight. You know, read Lion, the Witch and the Wardrobe as a family aloud, or set your, or just have three, you know, just a couple of suggestions. I think the more we can urge parents along and, and prompt them, then the more they will do it all.
To that point, I think that's, there's something in time, it's extremely limited for all of us. So I think that the reality, of course, of we all want to be involved in that process, but I think from where I would say, I would be happy if extending, you know, I love having the read alouds during the day, but there's no reason, let's embrace twenty-first century technology. And why not, you know, since once a month, that there's a read aloud by me that's on Facebook Live and/or Instagram. So to your point too, that it's not only being modeled, and it, it doesn't necessarily have to come from the principal, I feel like it also has to come from, could be guest readers as teachers or whomever, or it could be parents, that it could be much bigger than that. But that would be a nice way maybe to bring that homeschool connection, and then it's not necessarily impacting or impeding upon, you know, family time too, because we need to make sure that you have time together at home, just enjoying that time.
You're getting the grumpy professor face. You just got to read to your kid, you have your kid read to you, that's what you have to do, you have to say.
Yes, but parents want to do that, so we have to help them a lot.
I know.
Right, and that's something, I mean, I would be happy, some surrounding districts have done that, and that's something we would be able to do and not too intricate, I think.
Getting a raw nerve for Professor Ho. All right.
Can I ask a question that is not, it's mainly. The, is that the report, huh? That, there's a graph and it labels, so it's two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, so we'll just take the three bars for two thousand seventeen. And it says Garrison School, twenty seventeen, Garrison U F S D, twenty seventeen, and New York State, twenty seventeen. Is there a reason that those, that Garrison School and Garrison U F S D are broken out separately? School and district?
Yep, it's, it's the same percentage, I don't know why, but.
Except that it's actually, there's a couple of them that are, that's like one percent difference.
Then code?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it goes by, the school district is, is one color and then the school itself, most schools districts have several schools.
Right, okay.
We have one, so one is the same.
That's what I figured, but there's a couple of them that have like, that, you know, they're off by one percent.
Off by one, yeah.
Right, there was that six, seven percent that.
There's one that's thirty-eight and thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent, thirty-seven percent, oh, you got it.
Curious about that.
Okay, just, okay, so just random, that's.
I don't know what that is. I, I noticed the same thing.
Yeah, sixteen percent, fifteen percent, okay.
Okay, that's a long one, but you know, I just, I'm sorry we kept you here for so long. At the same time, it's necessary to, for us to, you know, get at some of these issues, because a lot is riding on it, you know, it's super important, it's a priority. It was the first priority, I think we identified three years ago, saying.
Self-identified, yeah.
And I think the whole district, the whole school, everybody agreed, so, and the board agreed, right? All right, so thank you so much.
I think for Melanie and Holly, their, their work and just working with that interator reliability of just really coaching with, we're truly appreciative, because they, there is, cannot be more than enough set of just the work that you've done with everyone, so we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Well, on the flip side, we really enjoy working with your teachers. I mean, they've, they've taken on a tremendous amount and embraced it wholeheartedly. And there are not many places we work where teachers have embraced it as, as they have. You know, they, they do a lot of research on their own, they come with questions, it's really wonderful for us to work here.
They've never said no to anything we've asked them to do.
That's, that's great, that is really great to hear, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hugs are not on the agenda.
You're getting a little dictatorial over there, Professor Ho, hugs are not on the agenda.
So this is just overview of our presentations going forward, so this is today. So the next board meeting will have the other two priorities in technology and social and emotional learning. And make sure then we'll present similar perspectives too, in terms of perspective from superintendent, principal, but then also Mr. Ramon, some of our teachers and our teams will come and join us and present on that. And then at twenty-ninth, we'll then, Lauren and I will present the entire process, and by that time, we'll have completed the, the staff discussions we've been talking about. And we're concluding also getting feedback from our students, we spoke with the eighth graders, but now, you know, we're working through our student government to then get feedback from our, you know, grades K to seven, to make sure that we collect all of that and share that out, so that we can then make recommendations based on all of that quantitative and qualitative data. And then June twelfth would be an opportunity for us to collectively finalize and then perhaps approve what we feel are the next appropriate priorities going forward.
Twenty nineteen, twenty two.
I know, twenty, that's unbelievable. And it just begins with this and ends with this, so we appreciate that we're taking the time, because it is a time-consuming process, but been truly valuable, I think, for us and our kids. And you know, here also it's nice to hear our staff being committed, because they do truly invest a lot of time and energy in this, and it's being reflected in our case and our performance too, so.
I think, I think this is a, an ambitious schedule. Just a estimation, you're going to be delivering out a report of the district priorities to the board at that point. So you're basically echoing back everything you hear, right? There might be a need to, you might get feedback, there might be, you might be, you need time, you might need a little bit more time than two weeks to.
You mean between, for the twelfth?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just think because, you know, the board has been meeting with you individually, but when you hear everyone's concerns, there might be some feedback that requires you to reflect a little more deeply and maybe even go back to specific constituents and say, this is what we're hearing. And then you might be able to bring it forward. I'm just thinking you might need more, I would just schedule a little bit more of it.
And we appreciate that reminder, because we do have our, on that same token, our community forum, so our opportunity for, on our constituents within the community and parents, what have you, that will be this Thursday from two to three as well, six to seven. And then also another opportunity will be afforded in the evening, May thirteenth. So again, to have perspectives. So again, to have perspectives, um, so we can truly collect as much of that information and pull all that together as well, so.
Has that been blasted out recently? I would recommend doing.
This is actually a screenshot of the mailing that was.
Oh, we can send that as, kind of.
I think you need to, I think too, just because the, the break towards people for a loop, they stop tracking at some point.
Yeah, that's easy.
Okay.
P G A signed out.
You did.
Thank you.
Thank you, P G.
Just returned. Thank you.
Never have it up in mind.
When is, when is graduation, when is graduation issue?
June 19th.
June 19th, thank you.
Okay, we good?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you so much, well done.
I was thinking we were running out of days, that's why it's weird.
No, it's time.
Do you wanna say anything?
No, um, I just, we're very happy with words of advice, that also was a shared decision. Uh, we brought in three vendors who presented, um, and staff chose words of advice, and we're so lucky to have Melanie out, it's a nice, um, partnership. And I wanna say thank you very much, Alex, um, working on the presentation.
Sue, I think you're up, eh? You know, financial reports?
Oh, okay.
Treasury, treasury report.
That was a quick one, Laura.
Do we have to make a motion? Or we have to hear the report first?
Huh? I have to go to the treasury report.
Yeah.
Um, I have the March investments first, um, we started out the month with seven million nine hundred forty thousand four sixty-nine fifty-four, um, we had interest of six thousand fifty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents, and we transferred, um, seven hundred and sixty thousand out, um, for payroll and expenses. So we ended the month with our investments of, at seven million one eighty-six five twenty-one fifty-three. And then the next report is the multi-fund report, um, started out the month at one million ninety-two thousand five eighteen seventy-five, had overall, um, income of one million seven, uh, seventy-one nine sixty-two thirty-six, and most of that was from the investments of the seven hundred and sixty thousand. Um, the other big part of it was, we did get some, uh, the spring advances of what they call fifty-three thousand.
That was up?
I'm sorry?
That was up? Did that up?
It wasn't up, it's, um, they, they, they send us what they call the spring advance, um, it's like the balance of what they owe us, except for a little bit, that they give us more towards the end of June or sometime into the summer.
Keep it moving, yeah.
So, um, and then we had expenses of, uh, about eight hundred and sixteen thousand, um, so we ended up the month at, uh, one point three forty-seven five sixty, five fifty-six seventy-two in the multi-fund account.
Any questions? Any anomalies that, uh, particular that maybe year over year that you're like, hey, this is odd?
No, not with the treasury report.
Terrific. Uh, being resolved, the Board of Education, the Garrison U F S School District accepts the treasury report from March 219th.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
We just passed budget status, revenue status, warrant reports.
Yep, um, I mean, I'll just say in general, um, warrant report, pretty much business as usual, um, revenue status, um, because I had a question earlier, I'll just explain that we pretty much have a lot of our revenue in right now, um, although you'll see that if you look at the unearned revenue on that report, um, there's like a shortfall of nine, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, and that's because, if you recall, when we're, when we planned our budget last year, we said that we were gonna cover eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, so that, that's a journal entry that happens when the auditors come here, so you, you know, that's most of it. Um, we will have other income before the end of the year, and, um, there are some adjusting entries that happen, um, when the auditors are here and they start to come in, uh, the first week in June, so, um, you know, as far as revenue status goes, we're, we're pretty much, um, there at full year revenue status, but, um, a lot happens in May and June, so that will change. And if you look at the, uh, budget status report, um, you'll see that we're underspent, um, bottom line, at the available funds of about five hundred thousand, and that will change too, because, um, again, this is the time of year where I really go in and look at P O's and see if we, you know, spent everything and, um, you know, uh, basically clean up P O's that are left over, like have unavailable funds, I clean them or, um, that we've spent everything that we have spent in that, so, um, what I see, um, I see us really using the full eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that we say we're gonna use, but what we, I do see that the, um, fund balance would probably go down, probably, um, I'm thinking at this point about three hundred thousand, not eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, so, um, that's where I'm thinking that we're gonna be.
Down to five hundred thousand roughly, or down to three hundred thousand?
Down, uh, using about three hundred thousand out of fund balance.
Down to how else, roughly?
Where is it right now? Um, I think I, I, 'cause it doesn't change, um, we keep it at the June level until the auditors come in, I wanna say that it was three point seven, I think is what I reported, um, at the last meeting, off the top of my head.
All right.
So unless there's any other questions on that, I just wanted to give you a quick overview of that, um, then I can move on to the budget transfer, which, um, you would have to approve, and, um, let me just open that up, give me a second. Um, and the main part of this is, we, we just have a lot of Bose's, um, special ed expenses, I know I've explained this before, but, um, uh, we've had other expenses that were related to, uh, guidance with Bose's coming in and, and actually, uh, helping us with some students, so, um, and health services, uh, there, that was the other big ticket item, uh, health services, uh, it's mainly, uh, the increase that I'm seeing from, uh, the Manitou School. It's not something that, uh, we budgeted for last year, um, on that line anyway, I mean, I, I kinda.
This is for the nurse stuff.
So it's two health services, right?
Well, health supplies is just two hundred dollars, but the health services, I, I have an increase here of twenty-eight thousand one hundred, because we got the bill from Haldane, um, they charge us for health services at the Manitou School, and it, we have a lot of students there, so it, it's quite hefty. I, I had the money basically budgeted in tuition with Haldane, so that's why you see the movement on the tuition line going into health services.
And do we pay for, we pay for the health services of our tuition students too, correct? Is that wrapped up in tuition for the students that are going?
Well, they don't charge us separately for the, our students that are going, they, they charge us tuition. They charge us for our, our, um, our resident students that go to Manitou School.
Yeah, I get that.
Just like any other, um, school, I mean, we get quite a few of those contracts that the board signs off on, so.
Well, for all our kids, who are going to school wherever they're going, hey, whether it be P S.
If they're, if they're going to private schools, um, and it's, um, it's really the district of, um, area choice whether they wanna charge.
I see.
It's, um, it's not a mandatory thing, but most schools do.
Most do. Right, turns out, right?
Turns out that most of them do.
Yeah, there's a thought we're giving there.
And we have a school within our boundaries, that we could do that, I, I would be doing it to.
Right.
Especially once the, the money was getting.
So state requires us to do certain things for students who are electing, or pick the families that are electing to go to whether it be Catholic school, private school, whatever school, right?
Mm-hmm.
Special education settings, a number of things, and one of the things that we, just so y'all know, one of the things that we have to pay for might be health services that are provided there, um, textbooks possibly, uh.
Yes.
If, you know, a number of things, and transportation within a fifteen mile radius, of course, right?
Yes.
And, all right, so, and those services, uh, health services, psychology, right? Right, something like that, is that true too? Counselors, whatever, tools, yeah, those things are delivered through the, the local public school, that, the district that that private school sits in, so, uh, for P D S, it's the Spacken Kill, I think, school district, right? Am I right about that? P D S, Spacken Kill?
P D S.
P D S.
Phippsy Days.
Oh, okay. I didn't know the answer.
Sorry, sorry, yeah.
Sorry. Um, I.
I'm not sure if it's, no, I don't think it is Spacken.
It might be.
It's Spacken, whatever was right next to Spacken.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and for masters it'd be Dobbs Ferry.
Yes.
Would supply those services, and we would reimburse those districts, just so y'all know. Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
So I believe, I believe that has to be approved.
Yeah, re, re, being resolved, that the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District approves budget transfer number six in the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Consent agenda, thank you Sue, consent agenda. Okay.
Never seen one this short.
Yes.
Ray would say it's mercifully short.
Beth, I, I do the first in this, I, I float the idea of result, of accepting this, right? Is that the other?
It's only this one, no.
Yeah, being resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District approves the consent agenda, item five B as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so now have to read it, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's the proof, the appointment of the individuals noted below to work at the annual district meeting, budget vote and trustee election on May 21st, 2019, voter registration on May 8th, 2019, and should I announce those names? Yep, uh, they would be Gail Lucio, election, election inspector at twelve dollars an hour, wow, and Donna Anderson, election inspector at twelve dollars an hour. Oh, whoa.
Keep going.
Sorry, the other side, Catherine Clark, election inspector at twelve dollars an hour, Gladys Gouveia, voting machine inspector, two hundred and fifty dollars a day for Putnam County Board of Elections, Earl Gunderson, uh, election inspector at twelve dollars an hour, Susan Peel, voting machine inspector, two hundred and fifty dollars a day for Putnam County Board of Elections, Susan Peel, chief election inspector, twenty-five dollars a day, Carl Kircher, voting machine technician, thirty-one dollars thirty-eight cents an hour for Putnam County Board of Elections, and Christopher Primavera, voting machine technician, thirty-one dollars thirty-eight cents per hour for Putnam County Board of Elections.
So moved.
We seconded, right? Is that it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, no, nothing. Okay, passes. Discussion item, Gulf Station. So we have a Gulf Station, it's right next door, right? Still there? Anybody have any questions about it? We wanna discuss it. As you remember, they're putting up a proposal, uh, the Gulf Station, the gas station, putting up a proposal to add a canopy, which is one of those things over top of the pumps in, in order to protect rain, which would be a, uh, I guess an augmentation to their current, uh, infrastructure building, and also they've applied for a change of use to allow for the sale of cars.
Do we have an update of where they are in this process?
We do, we, well, we sorta do.
All right.
Because I, as a citizen, not as a member of the board, attended but did not participate in said planning board meeting, okay? So I went to the Phillips Town Planning Board, scintillating, and, um, what we found out is that this was a discussion item, this, uh, particular proposal, right? And that it is, there seems to be no movement on the proposal. The planning board has reached out to the owners to say, we would need, you know, look at the D E C, uh, requirements or the remediation to the pre, previous, uh, for the site, we would like, uh, to talk, discuss the change of use, car, uh, used car sales, so it would be adding used car sales, right? It turns out that used cars in gas stations, it's common, uh, selling used cars to gas stations, but it is, there is no guiding law regarding this. That is to say, Phillips Town neither allows it nor disallows it, it's extra legal. So in theory, they, it would be, um, that's it. So they would have to, planning board would have to render a decision about that in order to determine whether it would be within, uh, the purview of planning board to regulate it, okay? So that's basically the deal. Um, the planning board has reached out to the applicant, the applicant has not responded to several attempts to reach out, and that is my update, that they, but I was, I was sort of heartened by the attention that they were giving the issue, uh, in the sense that I think, you know, obviously we're on well water, obviously anything that involves remediation of a spill site of any variety is, is of concern, uh, that's to say if you're disturbing the remediation or, uh, anything like that, with a neighbor, we should definitely be aware of, I guess, is the question. So right now, there's nothing to say, it's just a discussion item, um, how we wanna move, is there, is there any, does anyone have any questions or concerns or thoughts about, uh, how we want to act on this as a board? Whether we should act on the board, whether we should seek counsel advice, any number of possible suggestions, thoughts or concerns? Laura?
I think they still have, they still have to get back to them right now, they're not, nothing's going on then, right?
That's the status.
The status.
Right, the status is, the board, the planning board has reached out a few times, there's been no response from the applicant.
Do you have any idea if, uh, has their application, um, been modified since the original one that we saw, um, that had a number of errors, we'll say, about it being within five hundred, I don't remember the specifics, of being close to a school, close to a national historic.
It was not open for discussion, it was an old business item, so we could, we, I, people, there was no attempt for the public to comment on it. There was no opportunity, I'm sorry, there's no opportunity for the public to comment in that particular session.
Any idea what are, what we could do if we wanted to speak as a board, to say something?
Uh, I think.
One of the.
It's our role here.
Ideas, I mean, uh, we could do any number of things that would correspond to, you know, polite letter to the planning board to reaffirming our, uh, the import that maybe,
Our concern.
Our concern that anything that's done there be appropriate.
And to let.
Consider issues of traffic, we have lots of cars coming in and around that corner there, if they are selling two cars, not a problem, twenty cars, thirty cars might be a problem, right? We, you know, so, um, we would like to know the capa, I think we would wanna know the capacity that any alteration of the current traffic, uh, I don't wanna blow anything out of proportion, but there's a lack of information that we have, and, uh, I think we would just, we would recommend that the planning board, the change of use would impact our traffic patterns, because we have buses coming in there, we have, uh, parents coming in for pickup, it's a key circulation route, um, for us.
A lot of kids after school walk across the street to ask if.
We have kids that are after school, um, I mean, a number of things.
Well, you've got the nursery school of them too.
And then obviously, we are concerned about, um, the impact of any type of disturbance to, or, uh, any type of, yeah, I would say disturbance to any remediation, uh, attempts to, that would impact us in our well water, our property.
Couldn't there be a way to send a letter somewhere to request that we are informed on when the application is acted on, or if, it's not even, the application hasn't even really been put in yet, or?
The application has been put in.
Yeah.
The, to, the, the application has been put in, the board is seeking, the, the planning board is seeking con, uh, clarification, and there has been no response to their questions or their considerations, which ranged from the change of use and to what, whether previous, uh, issues have been successfully resolved. In order for them to move forward, they have to know that anything that they've done in the past has to have been done well. In other words, whenever you put in for a permit, it invites scrutiny of your previous permits, okay? So that's just the way it is, I don't know if it's, that's the case, but it seemed to me, reading through the leaves, if that seemed.
But maybe with the help of our attorneys, send some sort of a letter saying, you know, keep us informed or something, so that we.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would, yeah, possibly, I would, I would advise you either just to check with council about what an appropriate way to proceed is, but, I, I mean, Yeah, I mean, I would, I would, yeah, possibly, I would, I would advise you either just to check with council about what an appropriate way to proceed is, but, I, I mean, we don't want to be poor neighbors either.
Right, yeah, yeah, so I was just saying, just to be informed of when things.
You know, we, we cert- Right. It would, might not need to be drafted by council, it could just be, you know, a letter from the, the board. So, um, do you have any thoughts on how you would like to proceed?
I, I'd put council down, I would just, just for some ideas.
Yeah, we have to check with council.
Okay.
And, and maybe help direct the letter or just sort of guide us in it.
Yeah, I think.
Guide the board in it. Doesn't have to exactly be from a lawyer.
Okay. Do you need any directive from the board to do so, or do you feel you have?
I'm good with that.
Directive enough.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
I don't want to be dictatorial.
Maybe call, um, touch base with our insurance company to, just to see if there's any.
Yeah, that is an excellent idea, Laura. That is an excellent idea. I think I really would touch base with our insurance company.
Just to see if there's anything.
You know, um, we live in a, uh, an area where we're on well water and that matters. And anything, anything that our neighbors are doing is, could have potential impacts. Anything we do could have potential impacts on, on our neighbors. And I think we have to be sensitive to that.
Well, and everything heads down to the river, the watershed is all.
True.
Heading down, so.
Yeah. Yeah. The traffic, depending upon what they're doing, I mean, I, I just don't know the scope of their plans, the scope of their project, or the capacity, right? But if it alters traffic in that area, in other words, if they're putting up, you know, banners that say used cars, and we have people turning in there, we're gonna have an issue with how our traffic circulates and access. But, you know, polite, polite tones always work out here.
It might be possibility too, to, um, contact the DEC if they're involved in this and ask for them to keep you in, keep us informed also, or see what the lawyer say about that.
Yeah, the, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of the planning board also would make a recommendation.
I think, I felt, I felt confident that the planning board was on top of the, the D, on the DEC.
Well, I'm just.
Yeah, definitely.
If we want to stay informed and might as well.
Thank you.
Hit the whole thing nicely or.
Well done. Okay.
Can you keep us up to date with whatever that is, or, and especially like, and I, you know, probably should have checked to, to look at when the planning board was meeting, cause I'd like to go to one of those meetings at some point as a citizen, but, um.
Think if you contact the town board as a citizen, they will put you on an email list if you ask them.
Oh, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, also the aesthetics matter of the, you know, canopy, I'll just say. We have, you know.
The more neon that are right in.
We don't have a lot of, you know, we don't have a lot of services in this town, but we have a lot of pretty things, you know, and, uh, the church and the school are two of them, you know. So taste matters, right? Thank you. Okay, action item. Let's see. Garrison Board, what is it? Action item, action, action, action. Whereas the Board of Coop- what am I doing here? BOSES?
Yeah.
Okay, this is, uh, great. Whereas the Board of Cooperative, uh, Board of Cooperative Education Services of Putnam, Morgan, Westchester County, therein after BOSES, has proposed its tentative administrative budget for the twenty nineteen, twenty, uh, twenty school year, July first, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Now therefore be it resolved that the BOSES tentative administrative budget for nineteen twenty school year in the amount of nine million, four hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and thirty two be, and hereby is, approved by the board. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District cast its vote for the following two candidates, Tina Mackay and Frank Schnecker, for the Board of Cooperative Educational Services to fill the two vacancies. Their terms will run from July first, two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, a three-year term.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? None, abstentions, none, and that is passed. So, did I do that correct, Beth?
Yes.
Now we come to public comment. Thank you for the, for your patience, public.
Hello, I'm Sarah Torni, and I'll be speaking first as the president of the Garrison Children's Education Fund. I'd like to remind everyone that the date for, um, grants for the fall is May first. Please send them in, you can see all the details at gsep.net. Anyone in the community, parents, teachers, community members can submit a grant for consideration. Next, I would like to switch hats and speak as a parent to a second grader and a third grader in the district. I would like to request and review and update to the code of conduct before the next school year that will include a public hearing. My hope is through the public process, we can offer greater transparency to the discipline process and set the community's expectations, both for students, parents and teachers, as to what our process for discipline is in the school. And my hope personally would be that would also include, um, some reflection on recess and how we use recess as a punitive, um, whether we take it away from children for misbehaving or not, or whether we allow them to have that time. So I'd like to ask the administration and the board to work together on.
I generally don't like to do back and forth too much, but I, I just want to make sure, are you, or is the implication, or is the statement that we are taking away recess as a punitive action?
Uh, my understanding from my children is that it does happen.
I just want to make sure, factual request.
But I would also like to ask that before the board makes a policy around that, or the administration, I would like to hear what the teachers feel. How is that helpful to them? Do they not have another other resources? To them, it might be a very useful tool and there might be a very good reason for it. But I think it merits a conversation versus, uh, is that right, in my opinion? But I also think talking about the larger code of conduct would be very helpful for all of the community members as to what parents' expectations should be, teachers and whatnot, um, during the annual review process. And then in reflection to the literacy presentation, which was wonderful, I wanted to make a comment that, um, at many of my conferences, I have been given lists of books for my children, specifically what they should be reading, what is at benchmark, um, just to answer that question. And then I have two questions that without the consultants, the district might not be able to answer, but might be worth pursuing. One is do the teachers have the resources they need to keep, the students who are above benchmark, to keep them moving forward? And perhaps that comes into play with the materials and other things. And then my other question is, are the teachers taught to take a different approach with a student who it says has ADHD? Is it a different, individual, so much of this is so individualized, you're sitting with these students, which is wonderful, but do they have a different method when approaching a student who has, um, a disability upset? Or a different learning style, perhaps? And have they had that training? Do they need more training? Is that something where the specialist steps in? Just a question to toss in there.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you.
It might have been my bad form here not to invite the public to have questions about the presentation. Is that norm for us, to allow the public to have questions about the presentation?
Have you had questions? Uh, in the last, we actually, we've been trying to, I think, in the last year, cause I think I raised a little stink about it and.
Really?
Don't make it.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, so I apologize if there wasn't space for that, or maybe the questions came after.
And also we have flexibility in the agenda, so, um, I know at one point we said, oh, let's do public comment after the presentation.
Yeah, I guess that's. So we could have added that, you know, as a response.
Yeah, so, um. You know, it might be, uh, yeah, so I'm sure that we can get probably rapid response to both those questions through, or to our consultants, great.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I'm Crystal Ford. Um, I'm gonna put my PTA president hat on first. We have a, um, board meeting that will be open to everyone, it's always open to everyone, but it's gonna be actually in the evening, uh, May ninth at seven PM here in the library. So we're hoping that, uh, people who can't normally attend our day meetings will be able to come to that meeting. We sent out a survey to parents, um, just a brief survey, ten questions, just asking them for feedback. Do they want to see more workshops geared towards parents, what sort of topics they want to see covered, um, you know, what they thought of enrichment. And I actually got thirty-four responses, which I thought was pretty good for our, size of our school. And I got a lot of interesting, um, workshop, uh, suggestions that I'm happy to share with Laura and Alex, or if the board wants to hear, um, I can share just some of the things that the parents, um, you know, would like to know more about. We, we hosted a workshop back in February and it was the talk for parents. And I tell you, all the parents were like raising their hand and, um, it's just a lot of stuff that we, we were hungry to, to learn about, so. Stay tuned for that. And then we have, uh, the Youth Climate Summit is coming up in less than a month. So we're doing like a little walkthrough on Monday, just to figure out our logistics, but we have our speakers all lined up. Jill Lake created a lovely, um, little webpage for us, so go check out the Garrison, um, Environmental Education Committee website, guffsEE.org, right? And check out the lovely webpage. We have seven schools signed up. Um, all of our middle school is going to be participating and should be a really great day. Field Day, June seventeenth. I skipped talent show, which Shala is helping organize, which is May thirtieth, May, when's, when's talent show?
When is the talent show, May thirtieth?
May thirtieth, so we have a lot of, a lot of stuff coming up, PTA. So that's, that's it for PTA, so I'm gonna take my PTA hat off. I just had one question, why are there so many half days? Actually, I have a lot of questions, but why are there so many half days the last week of school? Like, it's almost painful, like five half days, I'm like, I may miss it, like, I feel like it's like Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, every day is a half day. So I'm just curious why that situation was made. Anyways, aside from that, um, I love, I would love the opportunity to read more in my son's classroom. I love doing that in Mrs. Ricky's, um, kindergarten class. We got, parents got to be mystery readers and, um, I think, uh, I would gladly take any opportunity to go into my, my kid's classroom and, and read to them. So I think that's a good idea. And then, it wouldn't be me if I wasn't beating the same old drum. So I, I found, uh, a couple of things online, and this of course is in, uh, in terms of, um, you know, tackling our greenhouse gas, gases. So I found the New York program that tracks schools' energy usage. I don't know if anyone has come across this, this is brand new, like April eleventh. There's twenty-one million dollars available to, uh, P to twelve schools focusing on reducing their, uh, greenhouse gas emissions. So I will leave that with you, Laura. And also, uh, I just saw an article in the New York Times that New York City is about to embark on the most ambitious plan to fight, fight climate change. They are going to basically force buildings to, um, achieve a goal of forty percent reduction in their emissions by twenty thirty. So that's like, not that far away. And they're going to fine all the buildings that are not meeting this code. Now granted, this is New York City, uh, but this is the most aggressive, um, policy, um, that's targeted towards, uh, building submissions. And I thought that was interesting and relevant to our ongoing, uh, conversations. And then the last thing is, I, um, but I, I did, I went through and I kind of highlighted the people that I recognized. I could always give that to you, but, um, that, that is it for me today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal, is the PTA survey still live?
It's still live, yeah.
Cause I forgot to fill it out.
Yeah, that's okay. Yes, it's still live. I'm still collecting data.
Okay.
So yes, it takes like three minutes to fill out, so, yes, thank you.
Do you have, uh, you have some documents?
I have this for you. And, sorry, there it is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm Shala Janetta. I was here in the last meeting. This is very different from the last meeting. Just, uh, quickly, I mean, everything, you know, I'm a busy mom. I don't get to come to a lot of the meetings. And I don't watch the videos, cause actually I didn't even really know about them until recently. I'm pretty ignorant when you, if you want to ask me, um, about how GFS works. Actually, there should be, not like you need any more work, Crystal, but there should be like a PTA class on GFS one oh one, on how it works. Because I'm lost. I'm like looking for answers and I'm like, oh, really? Uh, what, what, how did I not know this? And I've been here for a little while. Anyways, and then by the time you figure out everything, you're just like, whatever, I don't care, just get me out of here. But, um, there's been a lot of useful information. I feel like, you know, I'm still learning a lot of stuff and it's exhausting. And I feel like a lot of parents were let down from the last meeting, because I know a lot of them. And I really wish that like there wasn't this, like, way that we have to do things and you can just say it how it is, but we just can't, so. Thank you for paying attention to the gas station and hopefully people will have their voice heard without being exhausted and things will be resolved, but. I, I do feel like there should be a code of conduct for sure and like some, you know, there should be some kind of guideline to like know how things work. I'm not very good at explaining myself, but hopefully you understand what I'm saying. That's it.
Thanks, Shala.
Thank you.
You have plenty of minutes left. The, uh, yeah, uh, board comment? Jill?
Don't we have a code of conduct?
We do, I guess it's a question of whether.
You gotta get.
We're doing it.
Yeah.
You can review it.
Review the code of conduct, sounds like a good idea and, uh.
I think the, the parents get it every summer, don't they?
Some looks like it, yeah, just to talk about it more publicly.
It's also, the code of conduct applies all kinds of directions too, right? Student conduct, personnel conduct, yeah, and, uh, deals with a number of things. Parent conduct.
Oh, yeah, board member conduct.
Board member conduct. Are we in there? Yeah, yeah.
No, I don't think so.
All right, uh, Jill, do you have any comments? You good?
I don't think so.
We do have executive session this morning.
Then we do.
Read, read. Diane?
Nope.
Court?
Fine.
I would be interested in, I'm hesitant to bring it up because I don't know what's gonna come in the next couple of weeks with district priorities. But something I've been thinking about a lot and talking to different people, I'd be interested, I'd be curious if other board members are interested in having a discussion about, um, the school establishing a homework policy. Not, I'm not recommending what that policy is. Um, I've done a little bit of research. From what I understand, you know, it's fairly, it's pretty common for school districts to establish sort of a baseline of, um, going in a variety of different directions. There was a two-year committee process for a number of schools in Long Island involving parents and teachers and they just eliminated homework. Other schools have gone with the ten minute per grade suggestion. I would be, I'm just curious of if there is, if anybody thinks that is interesting, relevant. Haven't talked about this with you in terms of, you know, where it falls with the teachers, it's, um, but I think it's a worthwhile discussion to have. I've, in my news, however many years I've been part of, um, the school district, there's a wide variety, um, de- depending on grade and depending on teacher. And I think it would be beneficial if there was sort of a, a baseline of what, um, of a po- of a policy for, uh, the school state.
And you're not alone. It's sort of been a buzz in, um, emails lately.
Oh, yeah?
Homework policy, yeah. So I have a, a folder now, homework policy, collecting from other districts.
Hey, I'll send you all, all right, great, I'm gonna send you all my, uh, links.
My homework policy and guidelines, um, from around local districts, so.
Okay. Great. So maybe if it's, I can share some, the few, the links that I've collected and then if, I guess if, can we add it as a discussion item at some point to the agenda? If that's, is that how that works?
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
If, if the, if the board.
See, Shala, I'm still learning too.
If the board is interested.
Right, I mean, I, I think, I think what you're raising in the public, so this is a question of whether, uh, the superintendent and the president of the board, find a place on the agenda where it deserves. I mean, do you guys think this should be a discussion item?
I think it's the purview of the principal and the superintendent. I don't think this is a board issue. I do too. I do too. I do too.
Interesting. Okay.
It may also be potentially appropriate for the community forums. I, I know that in terms of what we've set up, I think that that might be, I know not necessarily with the board have per se, but that, that may be a venue where other parents and community members may share the same interest, and that it may naturally become the topic of conversation here through that process, so. But I, I also...
I appreciate, I appreciate Jill's, you know, sensibility towards the boundaries, you know, I appreciate that. I, you know, if we are to have a policy, it'll, it lands in our lap, weirdly, right? And maybe the policy is a deference to superintendent and principal. At the same time, maybe what we could do, if no one objects, is to provide a forum, you know, for that discussion, or maybe, maybe the PTA, maybe there's another, a different venue than a board meeting to have like a discussion about homework, of whether we should have a homework policy, what would, what would comprise that policy. I'm sure that it's very different, very different experience for very different classes, very different, right?
Right.
Right. So some teachers, ton of homework, some teachers lack homework, different kinds of homework might, might be the case. You know, what's a, you know, and what's age appropriate, you know? Some districts have gone with no homework till third grade or fourth grade, and then, you know, homework at fourth grade.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think it is, I, I don't think it's anything that we should decide at all. I'm not an educator. I just, I think, I think that makes a good point. I would just like to prompt a discussion in whatever respectable way that should happen.
Didn't Alex just mention of, you mentioned about getting it involved in a community?
A community forum?
So the, the community forums that we'll have on Thursday from two to three, six to seven, and then once again on May thirteenth. So those, the intent of, of those is to help inform the district priority process, and we sent that mail around, which we posted before, and the PTA was kind enough to remind everyone, so thank you again for that reason. So that could be any hopes, if, if people brought up, whether it's interest in homework policy, or additional enrichment opportunities, whatever someone's individual interest may be, that that would be a venue to that express it, that we can take that, share that back out in our future presentation.
I also think it'd be good, you could have a conversation with staff, just sort of, you know, who, who has the institutional memory, you know, sort of, what are, what are our practices? I'm sure they're different, as you mentioned, across grades.
I'd love to hear that. That'd be really interesting.
Cool.
Okay.
All right. You have a thought?
Well, I have a thought about, if we would have a policy about homework, we should teach homework strategies. And I can recommend two books. One is called Learn How to Learn, and it talks about how the brain works, how practice helps you, and it gives children and adults useful strategies for learning and preparing for tests, and also doing homework.
An excellent opportunity for me to procrastinate on the work I have to do is to read that book.
Yeah, it's great. Was there a second? You said two books?
Yeah. The other book is called This Book Will Not Be Only Test. And it does the same thing. It's a book really geared toward high school students and college students, and helps them with strategies to use so that they're, they're not just spending hours and hours and, and either not learning or not gaining anything from their things, but they're book great books.
The only comments I have are, are a couple. One is, I'm hoping that the facilities committee takes up solar, and start to have some vendors come by and offer solar opportunities for us, and what that would look like. Maybe the rec center is going solar. Yeah, the rec center is going solar, they're gonna be saving money, they're excited about that. We should be looking at ways that we can generate electricity. I would recommend, I don't know if the environmental education committee is the right committee for climate change action. I think we might need a separate committee dealing with carbon reduction. Would be pertinent. That's another thought I have. I think solar would go a long way.
Can I get your...
Yeah.
Sue, would, the energy audits that were, those folks, would they, the energy...
The market in the area.
The people that we've been...
It's the, it's the water.
...inviting to come in for the energy audits? Would they be able to...
Well, that would be part of it, I would imagine. I mean, I mean, we're, we're trying to get proposals from several different places on an energy audit.
Yeah.
So we're meeting somebody on May thirteenth.
They might have some referrals out. We could also talk to what the town has done, and who they've worked with, and their experiences, perhaps a phone call, like who arrived on that. I think they're using New York Solar Farm, or New York State Solar Farm or something. The, but yeah, I think the audit's gonna be a good start, you know? So I think that that's great. Lockdown drills. I think it's my understanding that we have to have a minimum number, correct, four. Is there anything in the state law, I'm asking out loud, is there anything in state law that would preclude us from informing or announcing them ahead of time? Do they have to be unannounced?
Some of them do.
You're asking, you're asking if they have to be unannounced?
Yes.
My understanding is, is yes, but I, I could look into that to see if there's any flexibility with that.
This is my concern. We have an increased amount of diagnoses that have to deal with anxiety. It is a national trend. Ha, ha, half, you know, half of some colleges are medicated for anxiety, okay? You know, forty percent population. I mean, like, it's a significant number. And I think, for whatever reason, I'm not sure why, so my thought here is that for those students who are receiving services, we might have, there might be a cross issue with, with this. I, I think it might be something to vet out. In other words, if you have an IEP because of anxiety, lockdown drill may trigger anxiety. Do we have an obligation to navigate that ADA issue in relationship to the state mandate? And one of the, what I'm wondering is here is, can we send a note to specific, maybe specific families, saying, we're going to do this today, you should know this, you know, so that they are, are fully informed? I don't know what best practices are that the safety committee might recommend, but we might have an issue eventually, and we might want to think about this just in the place of caring about the kids, whether this is a path we might want to go, where we, you know, might reach out to specific families and say, we just want you to know that this is likely to happen this week, or today, or, you know, whatever, whatever can reduce a meltdown of any sort. So I've been thinking about this for a while, and I just never brought it up. You know, there's no, nothing, no event has occurred that's making me think about this. It's just I've had it written down on so many sheets of paper, ask this question, ask this question, ask this question. And then other things come up, and now I'm asking the question. So I just wanted to draw, it's a, it's a, it's a concern.
James, can I just say something? Because I was on the safety committee for quite a while. And I, there are some, there's some that can be announced, but there's some that they, they don't want it announced, they, but they, because of the fact that they have to see how the kids react, the staff reacts under certain circumstances.
Just work, I think that's...
But I think the way they solved that, because this has come up in the past, was that there was a statement that this week, it's gonna be done. Not necessarily the time and the date and the place, but I am just, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just telling you that's sort of...
Thank you for that information. I don't know whether that's driven by best practice, or whether that's driven by law, but either way, we might have a, an issue with the ADA, you know, with being, being sensitive to particular IEPs and things like that. If you can't, you know, yell at a kid, you know, because it's gonna start, create anxiety, I'm sure you, you know, this, this might be an issue, okay? And it's just practical and thoughtful and considerate, I think, you know, it's, might be an issue. I don't know where the law is on this, but I do imagine this being, Sarah seems to know where the law is on this, no?
Just a quick reading. I just read through the New York State Law Book.
Which you haven't, I would...
You read through the whole law book?
I did. Thirty-six, section eight oh six A, or eight oh six, eight oh seven A, sorry, really leads it out, in my reading, it leads it out to the Board of Educat, is due to the Board of Education to decide this. And it is not, the number is...
On page two, some order, please start packaging. We distribute mentally friendly packaging for results. If we run substantially...
There's Jill over there.
You got your computer.
Yes, it warns that drills are required to be lockdown drills. Drills shall be conducted at different times of the day. People shall be instructed, the procedures to be followed in the event, there are... There is no stipulation that these need to come out at all in the law.
Yeah, my fear is that we're gonna run afoul of an, of an IEP sooner or later. That's my fear, okay? I don't want to go there. So we might want to be preemptive here, be a little bit proactive, you know? I'm just saying, because that's my job.
So now we tell Laura and Alex to...
Well, I'm just, I don't know what to do with it. It's a board comment moment, so comment it. The next thing would be, you know, I wish that, I wish the meeting last week went a little better on my, my, my part. And I tend to be critical, but I also tend to own my mistakes. And I just wanted to assert that my hope is that people are welcome to the mic, that public is welcome, more important, more than welcome, encouraged to the mic, to say what their truth is. We have certain policies we have to follow. I think some of those policies ought to be sharpened, revisited, and be pertinent and relevant to the population we're serving, and also to the atmosphere we want to create. I think that's important. I think I followed the policies. I think maybe totally I could have been a little better. But I think, I, I think where it starts to the question of, how do we say, how do we speak about our child's educational experience without implicating personnel? You talk about your child's educational experience. What do they like? How are they feeling during the day? What, how do they feel when they come home? You don't have to announce who the personnel's behind it. You don't have to say, you don't have to say that this is the reason, the fact that you're, you're talking about your child, and you start from your child's educational experience. It's more than tolerated. I want you to strongly encourage that you come, with good stories and not-so-great stories, or good narratives about that, and not-so-great narratives. So if you feel the need to come to a Board of Education meeting, for whatever reason, if you feel that need, and I feel, I hope that people understand that this is a total green light. You just, you know, that we just, I think it's best just to frame it around your child's educational experience, how they experience it, rather than a kind of examination of a particular personnel. So that's what I recommend. So my apologies to the community if they felt let down by the vibe, or the feel, or the atmosphere that was created. I was disappointed in that atmosphere, and whatever I contributed to making that atmosphere, I deeply regret, because that is not my, not what I'm about. So I'll work toward trying to make that happen, even though I'm not usually at this rate. So lastly, I just wanted to announce that, a couple things, you know, some good things going on in the area of high schools. Haldane is embracing a little bit more problem-based learning opportunities. The capstone, the AP, the AP capstone seminar over at O'Neill is a real welcome addition. AP tends to be pretty driven by exam completely and utterly, and one of the criticisms about AP is that it doesn't allow for enough deep thinking and deep consideration and real-world application, that it's just driven toward the exam. It's also a slam, sometimes against the regions too, but it is, it is, the capstone is the attempt to fix that, and O'Neill's beginning to implement that, I believe, correct? And then Putnam Valley has been approved to be an IB, to have an IB program in their high school. International Baccalaureate Program in their high school. The first school in Putnam Valley to have an IB program approved. It takes about five years.
Putnam Valley or Put County?
Put Valley. The, the first in Put County.
Put County.
Put Valley is the first in Put County. PV and the PC. So the, the, so they've, they've gone through all the steps, and so they are going to be, they're not an IB school, they have an IB program within the school, and they have a coordinator assigned to it. And if you know anything about the International Baccalaureate, it's a very strong program that's well-vetted, well-developed, well-considered in many ways, and its focus is a kind of deeper learning, deeper engagement of material, and tends to be highly successful for those students who are excelling in many ways. And you can have a IB school, all, a whole school can be an IB school, tends to thrive in the high school settings, in the final two years of high school. So it might be, I just think, I just wanted to say, those are all exciting things happening in the area of public schools, and I'm, I'm happy for it. That's a positive note.
That's a nice positive note. I like that.
Like that, we will leave, turn to executive session. So move, so move.
Segmented.
And there it is. Call it a night.
Oh, nice.